The June 17, 2024 Legislative Session of the Anarundel County Council is called to order. Please ensure all phones and electronic devices are set to silence. We will now have the invocation led by Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please join me. Let's pray together, each of us according to our individual beliefs. We're thankful this day for all that you've given us, for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen. And at this point, I would turn it over to my colleague, Councilwoman Fiedler, who's got an introduction for the pledge.
Thank you. It's a team effort this evening. I'd like to ask Boy Scout Troop 382 to come forward. They are with the Broad Neck Peninsula Troop to do our pledge. Gentlemen, you can come up to the mic.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And they're running out. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that, under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under Forms and Publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4412.
Thank you. Before we open our discussions in public hearings, I would like to remind everyone in attendance, whether testifying or as a member of the audience, we must maintain decorum at all times within these chambers. Please know, individual conversations in the audience are very disruptive to the proceedings, and I would kindly ask you to step out of the chambers if a side discussion is necessary. We will now open our invitation to the audience. This is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece of written testimony, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Thank you. We will now call on individuals who signed up ahead of the meeting. When I call your name, please come up to the table and have a seat. When it is your turn, state your name and address for the record. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Signed up ahead of time, I have Mr. Charles Thompson and Mr. Kurt Svensson. If there's anyone else prepared to speak at this portion of the meeting, there are four other seats. You can also come up at this time.
Hi, Charles Thompson, Pasadena, Maryland. Chair Pickard, fellow county council members. The context of my testimony is comments that were made during Strike the Budget Meeting, where four members of the county council voted for tax and fee increases and three members voted against. I'd like to follow up on what was meant by results we will get by the increased expenditures in the FY '25 budget. What are you measuring? The general welfare of the residents, or the individual welfare of selected groups? I haven't heard much of any comments from the four council members who voted for the tax and fee increases about the concerns for the taxpayers. The closest, using my bar tab budgeting analogy, was telling the person who got stuck with the $365 tab that it only cost them a dollar a day. The second area relates to comments about maybe we should focus investments in four districts, and only four of us are governing today. Most likely, these were said in jests, but the fact these were said in public setting is troubling. Please remember the principles in the county charter to ensure responsibility of and accountability for public funds and promote the general welfare. Given this unprecedented budget has been approved, I'd ask that you hold public hearings with each department head on what measurable outcomes they are trying to achieve, should there be others, and what are the targeted achievement dates. What are the interim milestones and off-ramps? Use these forms to educate the public so they can weigh in on public affairs. We should only fund policies that are working. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson?
Words matter. Ballot-question wording influences voter understanding. The county council controls the spin. For example, the council approved this misleading question on the most recent ballot to amend the charter to provide that no county council member may serve more than three full consecutive terms. Here's what a friend of mine said after I clarified the existing charter provisions. Quote, "I wasn't aware that two terms are the existing limit. I thought this question created a limitation where there was none already." This question could have easily been worded in a more honest manner by stating it would increase the existing term limit from two terms to three. You all did it again at your last meeting when you approved Resolution 2024 with a similarly misleading wording to amend the charter to require that all meetings of the county council comply with the Maryland Open Meetings Act. Who could be against that? In fact, the Maryland Supreme Court has emphasized this state law only outlines the minimum requirements for conducting open meetings. In fact, this amendment replaces the existing more restrictive provision in our county charter, a home rule practice explicitly referenced in the Open Meetings Act manual. Most frustrating is that the public testimony that was given did not take serious issue with your stated purpose for the change, and there's a simple way to honestly word it. At a time when public trust in government institutions is at an all-time low, your action is not a good look. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
Sure. My name's Jennifer Jackson, and I live on Holly Avenue in Pasadena. I'm just here to bring awareness to an issue with county land that I think falls under Parks and Rec, but I'm not sure, so here I am. The old Pasadena Elementary used to be located at the top of the hill, and when it was rebuilt on the lower section, the upper hill was turned into a baseball field and rec area for the school. Our track is up there. It's where we do track and field day, all of that. Unfortunately, we're limited to the use of that land without police presence because it's not properly fenced in, because it's bordered by three roads. But my larger concern than the fence right now is that I don't believe the land was properly filled when the old school was removed. We had a lot of issues with the retaining wall, which have now been addressed, though that's concerning seeing how many are going up along the Broad Neck Peninsula, because they look the same. But while that's been fixed, we've been getting sinkholes up there. Last week, one happened on home plate. It was pretty big, like this big around, you could swish around in it. So I'm just asking that somebody do an assessment of the land itself to make sure that our kids and people there doing Parks and Rec stuff aren't injured. Additionally, I would like to ask if a flashing speed sign could be put up in front of the school. Calmings were added after the school, but they didn't do anything, and I heard there's a pilot program for speed cameras to go in at 20 schools, and if PES is not on that list, it needs to be. We've asked for a crossing guard, and it was denied due to a traffic study that showed the sunlight causes blindness there, so instead, we've left nothing except a crosswalk. And kids cross there. Even though they have a bus for that neighborhood, the families are still walking, and the kids have to cross there for middle and high school to get on the buses every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Wes Jones. I live at 312 Delma Avenue, Pasadena. I signed up online to provide testimony on 27-24 and 28-24, so if I'm speaking out of turn, please.
You are.
I yield my time.
Are you both here for?
That's going to be two of us. We will have a seat.
We'll see you in a little bit. Thank you. This will be the last call for anyone here to speak at the invitation to audience, which means subjects not appearing on the printed agenda. Okay, seeing no movement at this time, we will close invitation to audience. The invitation to audience is now closed. Is there any item, any council member would like to place on the agenda at this time? Mr. Smith?
Just a quick note. I just wanted to introduce, for those that are here, Luke Basset, who is now interning for me in office, so if you hear or receive emails from him, he'll be in my office here the next few months, but I wanted to officially introduce him. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 3, June 10, June 11, and June 14, 2024.
Minutes of June 3, 2024. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 7:00 p.m. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Ledbetter and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Minutes for the Budget Amendment Deliberations Meeting on June 10. The meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 9:05 a.m. and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Smith and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Minutes of June 11, 2024. The meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 11:00 a.m. The meeting was held remotely via Zoom webinar, beginning with a roll call of all present. And the minutes of June 14, 2024. The meeting was called to order by Chair Pickard at 10:00 a.m. and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Pickard and was followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 3, 10, 11, and 14, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries the minutes of June 3, 10, 11, and 14, 2024. Stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6124, In Ordnance Concerning Anarundel County Transit Development Plan 2024. Bill Number 6224, In Ordnance Concerning Sylvan View on the Magathie Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan and Assignment Agreement. Bill Number 6324, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning Residential and Industrial Districts, Conditional and Special Exception Uses Natural Wood-Waste Recycling Facilities.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 2524, Resolution Authorizing the Filing of an Application with the Maryland Transit Administration of the Maryland Department of Transportation for Section 5303, 5304, 5307, 5309, 5310, 5311, 5316, and/or 5317 Grants Under the Federal Transit Act for Federal Fiscal Year 2024. Resolution Number 2624, Resolution Reappointing a Member to the Anarundel County Ethics Commission. Resolution Number 2724, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anarundel County to Clarify the Duties of the County Auditor.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 30-24.
Bill Number 3024, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Planned Unit Developments, Community and Employment.
Mr. Smith, this is your bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a bill we've been working on for a couple of months now. Just so there is clarity, this piece of legislation is intended to impact a couple of different areas in the county, but specifically, its reach is for a rubble landfill that exists in Pumphrey's. Right off, I was trying to get the address. I got a couple of bills in my head, in Pumphrey's. Over the last year, we've worked with the community. We've reached an agreement. Pumphrey specifically has signed a letter in reference to this, supporting this particular change. It was driven completely by some of the decisions that they had made. We also worked with the county executive. We worked with the developer, and I think one other HOA that I, and I'll speak about them here shortly, Lithicum, here shortly. And so, this bill allows us to amend a deal that we have with this 100-plus acre parcel that is a rubble landfill, and for years, dump trucks have come on this property, dumped, you know, landfill or any sort of debris from construction sites onto this parcel for many years. And so, I've always wanted to get rid of it, because I thought, one, it wasn't safe for the community. They have had concerns for many, many years, and this is a way for us to mitigate that particular parcel. We did push this on to the Region One team. They reviewed it as well. In the short term, when we get to the end, I'll tell you about a discussion that I had with a number of different actors who are involved with this as well, to talk about the moving forward of this specific piece of legislation. So with that said, I'll pass it back over to the administration and hear their remarks.
Mr. Hunt, did you want to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Donnie Diop from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So we did discuss this bill at two prior council sessions. It does also make some changes to the PUD ordinance in general and creates the Community PUD and Employment PUD. I know we discussed that pretty extensively at its first hearing, so in the interest of time, we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any further discussion before we open the public hearing on Bill 30-24? Mr. Smith, you're good? We'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 30-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair. We did not.
We do have one individual signed up to speak. Is Mr. Ryan Parker here to speak on Bill 30-24?
No.
Okay, good to know. Is anyone else in the audience here? Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 30-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 30-24.
Bill Number 3024, In Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Planned Unit Developments, Community and Employment.
Mr. Smith?
So I do want to make a motion to hold this for two weeks, and I'll tell you why. I met and communicated with the developers, who we reached an agreement with. They have some issues that they're working through, but more importantly, I went to Lithicum's Shipley Improvement Association meeting last week, and there were a couple of members from, I believe, North Lithicum, as well as one of the other community association, who, they've been aware of it, but I will honestly tell you, most of my work was done with Pumphrey's, since they are the closest community off of Belgro Road to that specific property, and those were the individuals that I've walked through extensively with this. And so, in fairness to them and them wanting to understand what this is doing, before we put something in law, and then I go back and say, yes, this is what it's doing, I want to give them an opportunity to say, hey, here's what the bill is. I don't think this impacts you in any negative way, but I do value your input, and I want to make sure that that input is factored into this, if there is any reason to believe that it may impact them. I don't think it will, but I think it's responsible, at least to have that conversation with them before we say, yes, this is the way of life. So I'm going to ask that we, a motion to hold this for the next council meeting. So moved.
Second.
So there's a motion to hold the vote until July 1, 2024? And it's been moved and seconded. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to hold the vote on Bill 30-24 until July 1, 2024.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Robian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to hold Bill Number 30-24 to July 1 has passed.
Okay, moving on. Madam Secretary, please read Bill Number 31-24.
Bill Number 3124, In Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Reemployment, Reduction of Benefits.
Mr. Smith, this is also your bill. You have the floor.
We've also, so this bill, in essence, when employees of Anarundel County retire, whether they're public safety or they are regular citizens, when they reach, at a certain point, they wind up retiring. If they come back in the future to work for the county, there is usually a $1 for every $2 that they earn with the county, where that penalty is applied to those individuals. So if they happen to retire, and at some point in the future, they come back, we, the county, say, hey, your pension that we're giving you, we're going to hold that, because you're getting a different paycheck, working in a different department from this county. I've always felt like that was unfair to those who spent, in most cases, 30 years working for the county. They went to retire. Some time has gone by. There's a vacancy in another department within the county. They still have, these more seasoned individuals, I'll use that terminology, would like to stay engaged and come back and work for the county. They have a wealth of knowledge, and we have, for at least for the life of Anarundel County, have said to them, no, if you come back, we're going to stop your pension, because we're going to pay you. I've always thought that was wrong. It's similar to service members who retire. If they go back and work for DOD, we don't stop their military pension when they come back and work for Department of Defense or the US government, for example. And so, I've always felt like that was something that wasn't fair to those senior people who've invested majority of their life working for this county. And so, if we have a vacancy that we need to fill, and we've had trouble filling those, and this person may have a skill set that can meet that need, why should we not extend that opportunity to those senior individuals? What I do know is, living in today's market is extremely expensive, and so, people who are retired, they may find themselves wanting to come back to work, and they have skill sets. They have a lot of useful life left, and I don't want us to discourage them from coming back, because we're going to penalize them and take away their hard-earned pension. And so, this bill eliminates that penalty, so if they do come back and work for us at some point in the future, they get to keep their pension that they earned. It is not our job to take that away, and so, this bill eliminates that requirement. That's it. Madam Chair.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this bill at this time?
We're just here to answer questions.
Is there any discussion of my colleagues before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, we will now open the public hearing on Bill 31-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received one piece, which was shared with the council, added to the record, and posted to the website.
Just stay there.
I do have three individuals signed up to speak on this bill. Ms. Jennifer Jackson, Mr. Kurt Svensson, Mr. Charles Thompson. There are three additional seats. If there's any other interest, you may come forward at this time. Ms. Jackson, you have the floor.
My name's Jennifer Jackson. I live on Holly Avenue in Pasadena, and after hearing the discourse around this bill at the last meeting and the request for taxpayers to give input, I'm here to say that I support this bill to remove the penalty. First, I have zero problem with someone getting the benefit that was offered to them in exchange for their work. They earned it. I heard it said in the last meeting that cost of living for seniors goes down after retirement. Not in this county or this world. For all the seniors I know, I think they would disagree. I've also, I also heard it said that it will encourage retirement, because there's only a 90-day waiting period. I saw the amendment for 18 months. I think it's a leap to assume people will bank on taking a risk that they're going to get a role in a department they're not in and just decide to retire. But if it does encourage retirement, I say, good. People should retire when eligible. There's no reason to stay in the same role or department for an excessively long time. However, their knowledge is still valuable and can be utilized by the county for other roles. Why would we want to let former employees in good standing with long-term county knowledge go work somewhere else where there is no penalty, when we're already struggling to find people for these roles? And if they have a need or want to work again, they shouldn't be penalized for this. They already, they already earned the benefit previously, and now they're willing to keep serving our community. Punishing them for that seems exploitative. Bills like this are what I'm talking about when I say we need to get creative to solve the problems we have in our county. I have no problem as a taxpayer paying people for their work and providing full-earned benefits for that work. It's the right and fair thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Svensson?
I'm, Mr. Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. This proposed legislation is a poster child for what's wrong with the current process of introducing legislation. This bill was introduced on April 15, but the sponsor immediately referenced several substantive amendments that would be forthcoming. The discussion at the June 3 meeting plainly indicated that even some of you were confused by the then-just-introduced amendment and what would be accomplished. So here we are, over two months after the introduction of this bill, and the public is only now able to offer substantive comment related to what remains of this dramatically changed proposal, and the legislative clock is ticking. This piecemeal approach to making of public law is no way to run a government, particularly when it comes to something as complex as the design of a pension program. I also have substantive concerns. One of these concerns is this. The Government Finance Officers Association hushes that many government pension plans, as does ours, provide financial incentives encouraging retirement at a relatively early age and short term of service. Yet, on the other hand, the decision to offer a drop program, or this bill, extends employment, indicating a desire for longer terms of service. GFOA advises that if the design of the pension plan does not align with the expected or desired career length, then the overall plan design should be amended for better alignment. Now there's something to chew on. This piecemeal approach results in a system that conflicts with itself and wastes money. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Thompson?
Chuck Thompson, Pasadena. I understand the intent of this bill is to expand the pool of viable applicants for open county positions, but I think there are other ways to meet this objective while studying the potential unintended consequences of eliminating this pension penalty. For example, remove barriers, if any, to hire retirees as contractors while exploring ways to recruit new hires. If it turns out the best practice is to rehire retirees, then so be it. At least you took the time to study the issue, compare trade-offs, and make an informed decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Atkinson?
Good evening. Here we are. Good evening. O'Brien Atkinson with the Anarundel County Fraternal Order of Police. Anarundel County as an employer is evolving. There was a time not too long ago where the survivors of our members who died would have to forfeit their pensions if they remarried. The Anarundel County Council changed that, because they were not remarrying. They would just never marry again for fear of losing their pension. Officers who received a line-of-duty pension benefit were also likely to lose their pension or have to forfeit part of their pension if they were to have gainful employment after leaving service of the county, so they didn't seek gainful employment. That was changed by the county council, because it wasn't the right thing to do. My earned Social Security benefits are going to be cut by 60% because I have a pension through Anarundel County, and there's nothing I can do about that. All my years of working before becoming a police officer, my years of working secondary and paying Social Security after becoming a police officer are all cut by 60%. And that's something that we can't do anything about. However, my pension benefit is something that I worked for, that I paid into, and that I earned, and if, after I retire, I need to seek other employment, or I would like to seek other employment, I would like to receive the same benefits as someone from Howard County who comes here to Anarundel. As I said, Anarundel County is evolving as an employer. It is almost impossible to hire people these days. We need good, qualified people, and I think we need this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And good evening, Sheriff Sescor. Welcome to the chambers.
Oh, thank you. I'm just going to talk about the reality. I think everybody talked about the need, but the reality is, is that law enforcement is at a crisis right now, and we need to do something very quickly to solve this crisis. We don't have time to wait. We don't have eight months or 30 more days or whatever. The fact is, with the sheriff's office, I have 18 vacancies. That's about 21%. I have to staff every courtroom, and that was just thrown on me when I took office. That's an increase of almost 100 cases that we have to sit in on. Plus, I was just told by the Attorney General's office the other day that I am responsible for the Orphans Court. I now have to staff that as well, and that is in a separate building from the courthouse. Another reality is, the county police are going to lock up about 11,000 people this year. They did it last year, they'll do it again. Out of 11,000, 9,000 will be in the form of arrest warrants. At any given shift, or their day work or evenings, I have about six people to look for 9,000 people. It's not going to happen. We have to do something now, and we cannot wait. And if this bill can provide me with experienced personnel that have been trained by the best, then I say I'm all for it. It'll save me time, it'll save me downtime with training, and it'll also save the county money, because in a retirement, you get the benefits, health benefits. But when it... But when they come to work with me, there's no need for the county to pay health benefits again from somebody coming from another jurisdiction. So I am 100% behind this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Shire.
Good evening. Good evening. Mike Shire with the Fraternal Order of Police. As you know, we are for this legislation. I want to talk about just some of the, the issues that have been discussed regarding this piece of legislation. I think it's important that we understand a pension not as a retirement benefit, but as deferred compensation. That's really what it is. Like was said, this is something that the employee earns through the course of their employment. When they retire, that's when they get paid their earned benefit. As opposed to getting a larger salary or other benefits during the term of their employment, their compensation is partly deferred until later. If they choose to work, then they're going to work. They're either going to work for Anaronda County, or they're going to work someplace else. Somebody's going to have to pay them a salary if they go out and seek a job. Why not keep that person here? If they go elsewhere, we're still going to be paying their pension. Let's keep them here. Don't penalize them and force them to take their, their experience elsewhere. We have jobs that need to be filled. We don't believe that this will cause police in particular to retire just in order to get that, that, the pension and the salary. People want to be police officers because of the, the job that it is. At a certain point, our bodies and sometimes our minds are done with this job, and we're going to retire. We have many officers right now that are seeking retirement because the risk of their injury and continuing in the profession is not worth it for them. If, when they retire, if there's some way we can use those people to help our county in our police department, our sheriff's office, or elsewhere in the county, then we should absolutely take advantage of that. And finally, as Councilman Smith had mentioned, we actually save money by reemploying these people because we can stop their retirement healthcare benefit when they come and work for the county again. We're paying that benefit for the employee that we're hiring. We might as well stop the, the retirement benefit and get the benefit of that. And thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time on Bill number 31-24? If so, come on forward. Go ahead.
Me, Paul Higgins, Pasadena, Maryland. I sat here two weeks ago, and I listened to a lot of spirited discussion up there amongst council members on this bill. And I've spent a lot of time pondering, you know, good, bad, what was said. And I'm struggling with why this is not a, a good, a good thing. I'm 33 years retired from the government. I collect a government pension. I work for a contractor, and I do government work. Okay? I, I poach good government people to come back and have the government pay me more money to do work for. You should be thinking about not seeing the good people walk away to the contractors, but continue to stay here. I thought about, I, I listened a lot what you said, Ms. Radwien, about the school board and examples. I remember my school bus driver was a firefighter from Baltimore City. He had a CDL. He worked moonlighting hours. That was a long time ago. I think about what we could do with officers, not just police officers. We have a gentleman that comes into school from DPW who's now working for a contractor. He's got a government ID in Anaronda County, but he's being paid by the contractor to do the same job that he was doing when he left DPW. So I, I really did, I did a lot of soul searching. I looked for reasons why this wasn't a good thing. I think it opens the door when I think about police officers that I've known. I knew one who was in crime prevention and left and went to Marley Station Mall. Okay? When he retired, he went to work at Marley Station Mall. Why? They needed the extra money. Maybe he would fit well in today's school security systems. They have a whole different spin.
Thank you, sir.
So I, I just endorse this bill. I did give it a lot of thought, and I would, it's got a lot of value. Maybe, as Kurt said, issues need to be worked through, but yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 31-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 31-24.
Bill number 31-24, In ordinance concerning pensions, reemployment, reduction of benefits.
Madam Chair.
We do have Amendment Number Two. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two. Amendment?
Can I speak before the introduction of Amendment?
My apologies. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to provide some clarity on some of the concerns that were sort of levied at the table. First, retired employees can actually come back to the county and contract with the county right now. I think there's a 1,500-hour sort of capacity. So they can do that right now. This bill doesn't prevent a person who has reached their 30-year threshold for non-public safety personnel or the 20-year public safety personnel. They can come back right now as a contractor to do some of those positions. Now, obviously, there are, you know, on the federal side, we used to have, what is it? Government, inherently government functions, that the, the employees, if they're a county employee and not a contractor, obviously you have more flexibility that, that you can sort of levy on them when they are a county employee versus a contractor. A, a different nuance there. Two, I do want to sort of stump my foot on the saving the money. Remember, if, if an employee retires from the personnel office after 30 years, and sometime has gone back, and they realize in their 50s, 60s, or even 70s that life is much more expensive, which it is. Cost of living is insane here in this, in this county, certainly in this, in this country. And they have to go back to work. They're not going to retire and come back to their job they retired from. That, this bill doesn't permit them to do that. They're going to go work in Wrexon Park or some other vacancy that, that department has had issues trying to fill. That, we're just trying to open up that pool. I also wanted to sort of address the issue of whether or not this is going to encourage people to retire. If you have vested 30 years of your life and you're ready to retire, you're going to retire. This bill ain't going to change one thing about that. I know thousands of people who reached that retirement age, and they're checking out the next day. They may go on vacation for six months, a year or two years, but at some point, they, they want to come back to the workforce because they want to, they want more purpose to their life, right? It's, it's fun waking up at 10 o'clock if you're retiring and, and going to the golf course, but I know plenty of retirees, months after they retired, are like, you know what? This, this is, you know, I want to, I want to do something more with my life. They have mounds of knowledge that they can contribute. And so why should we discourage those, those persons from coming to give this county some of that knowledge? Right now, if they retire, whether that 30 years or 20 years for the public safety, they 100% will go to another jurisdiction and work and keep their full pension. Meanwhile, that vacancy in the Wrexon Park department still exists, and we're going to, if, if we can hire a civilian to come off the street and fill that position, great. But it, it costs us more as a county to leave it vacant because we spread load, that workload amongst the employees that are there. We wind up, it costs us more because when we get a new employee who hasn't been vested into the county for, not vested, but working in the county for, there's a learning curve there that they have to achieve. And so you get a bigger bang for your buck when you bring that retired employee back. I want to read something because there was an email that had went around earlier over the last couple of weeks. And so I had responded to one that I thought was, that sums up all of this. And one of the individuals, I said, retired employees may feel entitled to pre-retirement salary and be overqualified for entry point positions. And I told them in that email that I, I disagree with that premise. The reason I disagree with that premise is, is because I knew many of retired federal government employees who were very senior up there, which are my GS-15s, SESs, or even, even military that have retired. And when they retired, they had high salaries as well, and they wanted to return to, they have returned in a workforce in non-high-level jobs. Most of them returned to the workforce, they simply wanted to feel useful and purposeful. Many of them didn't want the demands that leadership required of them in the past. In most cases, retirees have given our county 30 years of their life. These more seasoned and dedicated personnel still have much to offer our communities and should not be penalized because of their prior service to our county. They're going to go work somewhere. Howard County, Baltimore City, Baltimore County, Montgomery County. They're going to go work. Why should we exclude those people for future vacant positions that we, that they could certainly satisfy, that can bring value to our county? That part, I will never understand why we haven't done this in the past, but it will save money because of the, the health benefits. If we bring that new employee off the street, the retiree is going to get that earned pension, and they're going to get that earned medical benefits. If you wind up employing a retiree into a vacant position somewhere, somewhere else in the department, the, the county, you're only paying one medical benefit, not two. So you save money if you hire retirees to fill some of those, those needed positions that we've had trouble filling. We're not, we're not putting them back in the position they retired from. I want to make that clear. They are not retiring and coming back to their position. If they retire, and after they've been gone for some time, and they choose to come back to the workforce, we just won't access to that pool and not discourage them because we're going to penalize their pension that they earned and that they're entitled to when they come back and get, and give us some of their, their hard-earned knowledge in time. That's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Are we ready for Amendment Number Two? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment increases the amount of time between the date of retirement and the date of reemployment from 90 days to 18 months.
Ms. Radwien, this is your amendment.
Thank you. One of my biggest concerns about this bill is the possibility of creating a situation where someone could retire simply in order to collect their pension and then be able to also collect a salary. And then we lose an employee in a role that they were actually doing very well in, and we need them to continue. So by stretching this period, sort of the wait time to 18 months, we, we discourage folks from, you know, immediately jumping back into the workforce so their retirement is actually, in their minds, at least starting out as a retirement. And with that, I move Amendment Number Two.
Chair, second.
I'll second it.
The administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just offer, so we, we're comfortable with this amendment. I think Ms. Podolsky can probably explain in a little more detail some of the, the reasons for having a separation, but I will note the state has a five-year offset, or a five-year break in service before someone's pension is offset, and that's to avoid incentivizing in part retirements, like Ms. Radwien expressed a concern over.
Ms. Podolsky, Personnel Officer, I, I think what's clear is that there should be a break, defined break in service between retirement and reemployment. The IRS, when you're returning to your same employer, would prefer that to be longer. The longer, the better from their standpoint. So the amendment is, you know, we can accept it or, or whatever the council wishes. There are reemployment restrictions, as Mr. Hunt alluded to, for the state. There is a five-year reemployment restriction. So if you do return to the state, within those five years, you do have an offset to your pension. If you wait five years, then there is not one.
Mr. Smith.
So I, I did speak to the sponsor, and I appreciate the, the desire to make sure that, you know, we're not sort of creating a process by which employees are retiring and then jumping right back into their, you know, employment. I would say that when we first started with this bill, there was no time limit. We had zero. We extended that at the last meeting. We added that amendment to add 90 days. You know, if, if this amendment passes or fail, at the end of the day, as long as we have an opportunity to come back, I would say, I, I want to walk you through the math. You have an employee who starts either after high school, let's say they're 20 years old, and they've worked for this county for, for 30-plus years. Let's say they're 50. And they choose to retire because most employees, when they reach retirement age, they are 100% thinking about retirement. I don't know one, one retiree who's eligible, who's gotten within months of their retirement, retirement eligible date, and not considered retirement. This bill is not going to encourage them or, or anything because they can retire then and then go work for some other agency, some other district, some other county, and then receive their pension as well as their future employment compensation. I would be more concerned if we were having retirees retire and come back to their same position. Then, we're, we're sort of creating a, a sort of a revolving door. I'm, I'm not, if the amendment passed, you know, it's, 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 I'm not going to die on this hill specifically, but I do think we have an issue right now in Anaronda County with vacancies that exist. There are opportunities for folks who have been retired already. And so, you know, I, I think 90 days is ideal for, for them to come back into the workforce if they choose to do that. And, you know, I, I would certainly like to see the 90-day continue because I think that's, that's appropriate. 18 months seems significantly, because by the time, if they, if we have to wait 18 months to come back to our county, they're going to go to Howard County, and once they start in Howard County, they're not coming back. They're, they're, after 18 months, they're set. They're staying there. They're not going to quit again and come back to our jurisdiction. So why are we extending it and, and creating that, that barrier for them to utilize the people here? Remember, they've earned the pension. That's not even the discussion. And if they're retirement eligible, and they want to retire, they're going to retire whether they work here or some other jurisdiction. This bill will not increase retirement because people can leave right now and go and work in another jurisdiction. And so all, all I'm saying is, let's not create a barrier for them, for us, to reemploy some of these folks into qualified positions that we, the citizens, can benefit from. That's all. And I'll yield back to Madam Chair. Thank you.
Ms. Podolsky, I just wanted to ask a follow-up to your statement about the state retirement plan. So if someone were to return to the state and, and receive that offset before that five years, when they hit five years, does their pension return, or are they giving it up forever?
After five years, it would go back to its unreduced amount. It used to be 10 years, and they reduced it to five years.
Maybe they should follow the county.
Maybe they will.
They have a lot of vacancies as well. Okay. Ms. Radwien.
Thank you. So I just, I, I respect the position of my colleague from District One, but I think we are in a little bit of a bubble here in Anaronda County because we have so many government positions, we have so many military positions. I will say, my husband is former Army and, you know, then went on to work as a contractor and Department of Defense. But this, I feel like this is just not something that's typical in most professions, in many professions, that you're able to sort of double-dip that way. And I understand the arguments of, you know, especially right now when we are, we are in a challenging recruiting time, but we might not always be. And we don't really have a, a clear idea of what this is going to cost. You know, we get our auditor, you know, does an analysis of every piece of legislation that we get, and the answer was basically, we don't really know. And so to have, you know, to basically be taking something that, you know, could really change things and, and cause people to, much earlier in their career, the idea that, you know, everyone who reaches retirement age retires is, I don't know, maybe that is the norm, but I have plenty of teacher colleagues that have worked 40 and, you know, close to 50 years. So I don't know that that's always the case. And I think probably one of the reasons that they don't is because, at least in the state of Maryland, we have a single pension system. So you can't just go to a different county and work as a teacher and collect your pension and a salary at the same time. So I just really think this sets, you know, if we're not looking at retirement as retirement, then I'm not, I'm not really sure what, I don't know, when, when, I'm not sure what we're doing. Like, what is this benefit supposed to be? Like, what are we telling people it is? It's a, I mean, we tell people it's a retirement plan. I think that's in the language. And we're, now we're treating it as a, is it a retirement plan or is it a 30-years-of-service plan? And I see those two things as different.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confirm, you, you referenced the state, Ms. Podolsky, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but I just want to confirm that there's no set separation period that is uniform across all entities. You said five years for the state. I think military to DOD is 180 days. It really is up to the legislative body making those decisions on what is the appropriate separation time. Is that accurate?
Yes, but I would say that the IRS would suggest that there should be at least a 30-day break in service from, from one to the other, from retirement into reemployment with that employer.
Perfect. Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Um... (end of transcript)
If I could create multiple pitches for the teachers so they can go, because I think teachers bust their butt for 40 years, and we pull a lot out of them, but that doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. We have county employees who've given 30 years of their life, 30 years of their life in most instances here in Anaronda County to reach that. How many years as a non-public safety person do you have to invest in in order to receive a retirement?
Age 60 and 10 or 30 years.
You said 60 what?
Age 60 with 10 years or 30 years of service.
So 60 years old or 30 years. So if they choose to retire, good on them. I don't want to force someone to have to work till 70 or 80 years old because we're trying to squeeze every single lemon to get every ounce of juice out of that person. And if they choose to retire and not come back to the workforce, that's fine. I'm not trying to encourage people who are retired to come back. I'm saying we, as a county government, should not eliminate that pool to fill vacancies for those unique instances where retirees can add value to us. That's exactly what I'm asking and what I'm trying to accomplish here. These retirees who are usually 50, 60, 70 years old, they have a wealth of knowledge, a lot of experience, and they sure as hell can bring back a ton of experience back to this county to give all of these citizens values. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure we recognize that and not penalize them for the commitment that they've given to us when they can go to other jurisdictions right now and keep their pension, other jurisdictions. So that's all. But I do appreciate my color. I'm not trying to create some sort of improper revolving door, but I'll just leave it at that. Madam Chair.
Is there any further discussion on Amendment Number Two? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radwien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
One in the affirmative, six in the negative. Amendment Number Two has failed.
There are no other amendments on this bill. That makes this bill eligible for a vote this evening. Is there any further discussion on the bill in total, Bill 31-24? Mr. Volkey.
I'll just add, Ms. Radwien, I appreciate the position you're in. I feel like I'm often in that position, looking at what are the fiscal impacts of things when they're unknown. I think the challenge is, to Mr. Smith's point, it's hard for us to fully appreciate exactly what's going to happen, right? I think you're making that point. I think he's making that point. But I think he's also looking at this, saying, we have a significant vacancy rate. We need to do something to try to address that. We are not, through other means, able to address it so far, and this seems like a way to try to get an educated and really dedicated part of the workforce back into our county. So while I certainly respect the desire to know the impact, and I'm normally in that position, I am going to be supporting this bill tonight.
Seeing no other comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 31-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radwien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
I just wanted to say, for those seniors who have retired, I want you to know that your hard work that you've dedicated to this county has not gone unnoticed, and we will not create a barrier for you if you choose to come back to this workforce so that you can keep and retain that hard-earned pension that you did, and you want to enrich our county in some other department. We value that. We welcome you. The youth in this environment needs you. The county employees need you. Your life has value, and it has meaning, and it has purpose, and I'm so grateful that you gave us 30 years of your life. And I want to make sure if you do choose to come back to the workforce, we're not going to take one other penny from you. Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Bill Number 31-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 49-24.
Bill Number 49-24, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Employer Retirement Savings Plan, Contractual School Health Employees.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table are Ann Bedowski and Kelly Lovett from the Office of Personnel, Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So this bill was heard at the prior council meeting and was held pending a letter from the Pension Oversight Commission. But you'll remember, it allows the temporary contractual employees who are school health nurses, RN1, school licensed practical nurse, school health assistants, and school special needs aides to elect to participate in the Employee Retirement Savings Plan under the 401B plan. 401A, I apologize.
Just for a reminder, we closed the public hearing on this bill at our last meeting. Is there any further discussion on Bill Number 49-24 at this time? Ms. Radwien.
Thank you. Just for the record, is there any matching with these contributions?
The 401A has a 4%, and then from the employee, and an 8% from the employer. So yes, 8%.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on Bill 49-24? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 49-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radwien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 49-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 50-24.
Bill Number 50-24, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Deferred Retirement Option Program, Term of Participation Period.
This is also an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I have the same folks with me at the table. As you'll recall, this bill was also held at the last meeting for a letter from the Pension Oversight Commission. But as a reminder, it was bargained for during the last round of collective bargaining and allows folks in the public safety pension plans that aren't in the police pension plan to elect for a seventh year of the Deferred Retirement Option Plan or drop. Police already have this. The other public safety employees have six years. This would give them a seventh year.
And as a reminder to my colleagues, we also closed the public hearing on this bill at the last meeting. Is there any further discussion on Bill Number 50-24? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 50-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radwien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 50-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-24.
Bill Number 51-24, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classification and Pay Plans, Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. You will recall, we also heard this bill at the last meeting, but it is to enact the personnel officer's classification and pay plans for county classified and exempt position classifications, which are consistent with the FY 2025 budget that was adopted on Friday. It was also amended at the last meeting to add Emergency Management Director and Transit Officer to the list of employees required to file financial disclosures and correct the pay scale in the classified service for police captains. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions or discussion for my colleagues at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 51-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We have not had anyone sign up ahead of time on Bill 51-24. Is there anyone here in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Bill 51-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill Number 51-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 51-24.
Bill Number 51-24, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Classification and Pay Plans, Classified Service and Exempt Service, Public Ethics, Financial Disclosure.
We do have an amendment, Amendment Number Five. Before we introduce the amendment, is there any discussion? Last chance, Mr. Volkey, comments on 51-24? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Five.
Amendment Number Five. This amendment requires certain positions in the county council to submit yearly financial disclosures.
Thank you. This is actually my amendment. We will be adding, this amendment adds our administrative officer, our assistant administrative officer, and our legislative counsel to those employees of the county council that would be required to fill out a financial disclosure form. This has been brought up by our Ethics Commission. They are appointed positions of the council, so similar to the appointed positions within the executive branch. I thought this was important positions to add to that requirement. Motion to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion? Would the administration like to respond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. I'll say, as council-appointed employees, we do not have any position on this. These are your employees. As you noted, though, the Ethics Commission had asked about this.
Any discussion for my colleagues regarding Amendment Number Five? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Five.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radwien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Five to Bill 51-24 has been adopted.
Bill Number 51-24 will come back as amended to be heard again on July 1, 2024. Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please add me as an eye on Bill 50-24. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 52-24.
Bill Number 52-24, An Ordnance Concerning Budget and Finance Grants Special Revenue Fund, Conditional Appropriations of Grants.
Mr. Hunt, this is an administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office, Kevin McMahon from the Office of Finance, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So you'll remember, this bill was heard at the last council meeting, but just to refresh your memory, so this provides a more streamlined process for appropriated grants that are not included as part of the annual budget ordinance. If three conditions are met, one, the grant award confirms that the funds are available; two, there are sufficient funds available for any required county match; and three, the county council is presented with a resolution and does not take action to hold a public hearing. You'll remember, this bill was amended at the last council meeting to allow for the three council members, up to five days after being informed, request a hearing on the resolution, and it would be held at the next regular council meeting. The goal of this bill is to get grant funding to departments faster by revising the need to go through the entire legislative process. We believe that by providing the county council the ability to hold a public hearing, that you still are retaining your authority as the final fiscal authority. And we will have a transfer bill coming up a little later tonight with several grant appropriations in it that would be obviated by this bill.
Thank you. Mr. Volkey.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So first, just want to appreciate the administration's efforts to come to the council and present this to us. You all have done a nice job of giving us the information. No surprise, I ultimately am not going to support this. I think one of the biggest concerns that I have with this bill is the loss of oversight from the council. And I recognize there have been some efforts by the administration to build in a mechanism whereby if there is a grant and the council would like to have a hearing, three members, which is a minority, is able to ask for that. And I appreciate that. That's similar to what we did with the COVID funds and some of the ARPA funds and CARES funding. But with that, one of the concerns that the auditor noted at the last meeting that I thought was particularly important is that if the council does not request that that come in front of us in terms of having a hearing on a grant fund, there would not be necessarily any oversight from the auditor's office on that particular grant. That does exist now. That exists because every single thing that is a grant comes down through the council, comes in front of us. And so ultimately, I should say, everything outside of budget comes through us, but even budget comes through us. So because of that, I think that's one of the biggest concerns because there's a balance between that efficiency but also that oversight and that accountability, which is necessary. And again, if we are truly going to be the final fiscal authority for the county, then taking away an opportunity for county legislative staff, which is the auditor's office, they work for the legislative branch, for them to not have the opportunity to review that is a big concern for me because, again, that takes away one level of that oversight. So certainly happy to hear the administration, if you all want to address that, but that's one of my biggest concerns with the bill as drafted. And I know Madam Auditor is taking some well-earned vacation, but we certainly will hear from them if we need to hear anything in. So with that, that's my biggest concern. Thank you.
I'm going to let Mr. Thoreau respond, if that's okay.
Stephen Thoreau from the Budget Office. In discussions with this bill, I did reach out to the auditor and just kind of ask that question, how many days might you need for your review? And I didn't get a response on how many days would be appropriate. So I think the administration, at least from the Budget Office perspective, would welcome an amendment that would maybe add some more days in there for their proper length of review, but we had not heard what that proper amount of time would be.
So I do understand the concern that my distinguished colleague from District Three has brought up, and it's something that I've weighed on as well. I'm curious with the, did you like that, the distinguished colleague? Thank you. I thought it was nice, too. Very good. The interesting thing for our auditor to respond to any sort of given number of days is, when are these going to happen, right? Like, you've bundled, what, four? Did I hear three or four into this fourth-quarter transfer bill?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Stephen from Budget Office, I think. I have my notes for the fourth-quarter bill. Hold on a second. There is six, and then there's another amendment with about 20 coming. So I think in the last public testimony I had provided, I think there was 65 over the last four years of grants total that were brought before this council that this bill would potentially avoid.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I think there were about 65 over the last four years of grants that were unanticipated that would require legislation.
It is a bit of a conundrum. Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go back to the comments that I made when we discussed this bill previously. The process to hear any grant before the public is, like Mr. Volkey said, similar to what we set up during the COVID funding. At that point in time, it was very contentious if it would be three or four. We ended up landing on three, but there's nothing to prevent, if this bill were to pass, from this council or future council, more likely future, from changing it back to three members of the council, I'm sorry, four members of the council required to bring a grant proposal forward. So with that, I do have to concur with my colleague that my concern about losing some oversight from the legislative branch is going to be the ultimate determinant for my vote this evening.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to actually follow up on the thought process, I think you were going down, about the number of days that the auditor's office may need to review something. The point being, I would imagine, depending upon the season, the number of days to review something like that could vary quite significantly. If that's coming in the midst of budget, when it's all hands on deck and they're already working an incredible amount of hours, you might need a completely different number of days compared to something when there isn't a lot of other analysis going on. So I think that could be a hard number to find, and I'm certainly not speaking for the auditor's office. I just, kind of building off of the thought that you shared, that's where my thoughts went. It's very difficult, I would imagine.
I appreciate that. I am mindful of this whole thought process. I'm mindful of what this means for our fiscal oversight. I'm also quite concerned with the expeditious nature we get grant dollars to our grantees, to those folks who are actually doing the work. I'm going to support this bill tonight with the caveat that the information that comes to us when these unanticipated grants are presented will be thorough and will explain the nature of the grants in a way that will either let us move them forward without a hearing or prompt us to do a hearing. And I'm willing to see how this goes, basically. If three council members choose to bring a hearing forward on any individual grant, we'll see how that goes. We didn't do that very much during the ARPA funds. We didn't do that very much during the ARPA funds. So I'm willing to give this new streamlined process a chance with the idea that if I start to get uncomfortable, that we can change the code. It's a living document. So I am going to support this bill tonight, if anybody wanted to know my opinion before I vote. Is there any further discussion on Bill 5224? Thank you. Keep me on task, Madam Secretary. We will now open the public hearing on Bill 5224. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We do have someone signed up in advance, so I will now call on Mr. Kurt Svenson with the understanding that there are five additional seats. If anyone else in the audience is interested in speaking on Bill 5224, this is the perfect opportunity to come forward. Mr. Svenson, you have the floor. Two minutes.
Kurt Svenson, Arnold, Maryland. I have often been critical of the lack of rigor and transparency in the process leading up to the introduction of legislation, and I suspect this emphasis on process has been misinterpreted as my susceptibility to that trap, which allows the perfect to be the enemy of the good. Believe it or not, I am an incrementalist. Yes, I believe we should always be on the lookout for unintended consequences, but not be so paralyzed by fear that we cannot experiment with new ideas. I think the history of this section of county code is, despite some bumps along the way, a positive testament to the practical power of incrementalism. The evolution of change in this section of code has taken place over many years and has been subject to lots of public review and debate. The very idea of conditional appropriation was not well-received by the then-county auditor. And now, sitting where I sit, even though I still disagree with her position at the time, I've come to respect it. I also firmly believe this authority was abused during the pandemic, albeit with altruistic intent. I am grateful that the protective measure proposed by a member of the minority party a few years ago was approved, and I think it's a testament to their open-mindedness that the administration is proposing to use this same protective measure in a creative manner to address a perennial bureaucratic backlog that does, in fact, delay the delivery of public services. So I urge those in the minority party to please support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for public testimony on Bill 52-24. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 52-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 52-24.
Bill Number 5224, An Ordnance Concerning Budget and Finance Grants Special Revenue Fund, Conditional Appropriation of Grants.
Is there any further discussion of my colleagues on Bill 52-24? Ms. Hummer.
I just want to say, Mr. Svenson, I agree with you.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 52-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
With much respect to you, Mr. Svenson. Nay.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill Number 5224 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 54-24.
Bill Number 5424, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
This is an administration bill. Mr. Hunt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. We do also have several people in the audience who may come up if questions arise. There are not enough seats for all of them, but I will run through them really quick. So we should have David Garris from the Board of Elections, Tony Geddon and Grace Tidings from the Health Department, Henry Farrell from the Police Department, Darlene Flynn, Tom Young, Mike Falzgrap and Chief Wolford from the Fire Department, Chris Klein from Detention, Susan Harold from Central Services, Crystal McGill Belk from Transportation, and Erin Day from Public Works. So this emergency legislation makes supplementary appropriations from unanticipated revenue and transfers appropriations between departments, includes the appropriation of $13,881,500 in the general fund, which is transferred from unappropriated fund balance. The CAO Contingency Fund, the Office of the Sheriff, the Office of the State's Attorney, the Office of Personnel, and Department of Social Services utilizes the entirety of the CAO Contingency Fund and adds $4.93 million to the total general fund budget. There are three amendments, and we'll discuss at the appropriate time. I'm not sure if Mr. Teroux wants to offer any additional comments.
Stephen Teroux from Budget, happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of my colleagues regarding Bill 54-24 at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 54-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony on the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I have no one signed up in advance. If there's anyone in the audience at this time that would like to speak on Bill 54-24, you may make your motion to the table this time. Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 54-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 54-24.
Bill Number 5424, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Fourth Quarter Fund Transfer and Supplementary Appropriations.
We do have, as Mr. Hunt mentioned, there are three administration amendments to this emergency ordinance. As it is an emergency ordinance, the amendments can be heard and voted on, and this bill can be voted on subsequent to these amendments, so unlike other bills. We ready for... Oh, Mr. Volkey.
May I have a question?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm looking at the fiscal note. There's $4 million that's been allocated to the Fire Department for the purchase of the fireboats. I thought we bought the fireboats in the last budget.
I'm Chair. Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. The auditor's review also states that there was funding in FY23 for that.
Right.
That had to be repurposed in FY23. So due to some fiscal management perspective and delivery of those boats, we pushed the last part of the general fund side of the fireboats into fiscal year '24. And the Fire Department is also here to answer questions on that as well.
Okay, but when you say you pushed some of it into fiscal '24, like, you didn't have funding for it until we do this fourth quarter transfer bill in fiscal '24. So you've used the entirety of the money that was allocated for fireboats on something else. What else was it repurposed to?
Correct. I think the auditor's blue letter dictated that as well, so it was largely overtime expenditure, personnel costs, and fiscal year '23 that could not be absorbed.
And so that's something that we tried to address in the budget that was just passed, is the idea that you tried to quote-unquote "right-size" the overtime budgets for police and fire. But with this... So my question sort of hones in on this. How did we know, or were we ever apprised, that fire was repurposing the money that we had appropriated for fireboats into overtime earlier in the cycle so that we get to this point where we're at a fourth quarter transfer bill and we need $3.5 million to be able to buy the boats? Was that ever provided to the council?
I don't exactly recall what the fourth... The Fire Department was in the fourth quarter transfer last year as well, not for as large of a dollar amount, but for some amount of money. I don't recall if that was for overtime-related expenditures or not. I'd have to go back and look.
I think it was, because the police were like $6 million and the Fire Department was maybe like $2, somewhere around there.
And I don't want to put on the record what exactly was said, but I imagine we probably said we're going to move some money around to make sure that the department is held harmless or made whole.
Okay. So then, when you have unrealized turnover for the Health Department at $3 million, what is that?
Sure. So the Health Department, about $3 million for unrealized turnover. A lot of this has to do with school health nurses and specifically around community schools. So they had to open up a number of community schools in fiscal year '24. They weren't fully budgeted for the amount of community schools. I think they had a lot of training and turnover. Like, I think the Health Officer had mentioned 50-some percent turnover rate in school health nurses during her last presentation. So that requires those health rooms still have to get staffed, so that means you're still bringing people in, even if you do have a high turnover rate. So filling up those community school health rooms costs a lot of money. I will say, there's an amendment that's coming forward that will reduce this by $1.7 million, though.
Okay. And then for the Police Department with the overtime budget at 2.7, ballpark with that, again, that's something that we hope we will not be addressing in next year's fourth quarter transfer bill?
Correct. I think you heard testimony during the FY25 budget deliberations that we tried to right-size the Police Department's budget, so by a like amount that's in this fourth quarter transfer bill.
Okay. And then with the $1 million to the Board of Elections with the unrealized turnover, what was that?
So maybe Mr. Garrity could speak a little bit on that, but it's really due to the election that just happened. So I think some of those mail-in ballots that they had to, you know, count, and just some temporary staffing that they had to upstaff for, we didn't have the right-size budget for that. But if you would like to ask the Board of Elections, I believe they're here for more.
Okay. And then the grain elevator at $323,000, what's that?
Central Services is here, but I think I do have a note. I don't have it all memorized.
Well, it's my favorite grain elevator.
So it looks like repair and renovations to the county's grain elevator was about $250,000, and on top of that, there were some insurance premiums related for that grain elevator. That was both noted in the auditor's blue letter as well.
And we were paying the insurance premiums for the company that's operating the grain elevator, or we were paying that on the property because we own the property?
That's a question I'll have to defer to Central Services.
Good evening. Susan Harold, Central Services Officer. Can you repeat the question?
Yes, ma'am, certainly. So the $324,000, it was indicated some of that was insurance that was paid. Who was being insured, and why was the county paying?
That was the property insurance, and it was because we bought the grain elevator after the budget, the former budget. So it was post-budget.
So what's the ongoing cost of property insurance for the grain elevator that we're paying?
This amount, and I would have to see what it was in our FY25 budget, but we did budget. We do have an allocation for FY25.
And that's not covered by the state, right?
No.
Because when we bought the grain elevator, we were told, this is going to be something the state's got the bond money, they're taking care of this, and we're going to have an operator who comes in, and this is going to be a net positive for the county. We're going to make money off of that. I remember, I asked a lot of questions about that, and it looks like it actually is going to cost us money.
It has cost us this amount of money so far.
So far. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on Bill 54-24? Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment increases a supplemental appropriation for the Recreation and Parks Child Care Fund.
Mr. Hunt, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Teroux.
Stephen Teroux, for the record, from the Budget Office. This amendment does exactly what it sounds like. We are adding some money into the Parks Child Care Fund of $150,000 from unappropriated fund balance to cover any potential overages that remain in the fund.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number One?
Second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number One? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment eliminates and modifies certain general fund transfers and supplementary appropriations.
The administration?
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. So this amendment is specifically at the general fund. I'm going to walk through each piece of this here. So starting with the largest piece, the Health Department is decreased by $1.7 million. I did mention that in earlier testimony. This is because they got an additional core funding grant from the state of Maryland that they were notified on May 31st.
Is that Amendment Number Three you're speaking of?
No. Amendment Two, general fund.
Okay, got it. Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Just confusing.
I'm not going in the order of the amendment. My apologies, Madam Chair. I'm going after all the topics. I will come back. This is the substitute language, sorry. Strike $2,987,600, replace $1.2 million.
We're on the same page. Thank you.
I will start back at the top. So striking the top, lines 21 through 31, this is getting rid of the transfers that were required from the State's Attorney's Office, the Office of the Sheriff, and the Office of Personnel, and reducing the transfers that were made from Social Services. Again, this is because we got that large grant from the state for the Department of Health, so they needed less money, so therefore, we don't need as much money from the other departments to contribute. What is added in this bill is there's an extra $611,900 to the Board of Elections for the same purposes of, we finally got the best estimate from the election that just happened, so it's about $1.6 million that's going to the Board of Elections. Additionally, we're adding $90,000 to the Department of Inspections and Permits. This is based on our last projection. We've got about a payroll and a half left, two payrolls left of the fiscal year. We're adding a little bit of cushion there now that we have a little bit more funding available. And that concludes the amendment.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number Two?
First to the...
Rodbien, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number Two? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Three.
Amendment Number Three. This amendment adds and modifies supplementary appropriations to the Grants Special Revenue Fund for the Health Department and the Department of Aging.
The administration, this is your amendment.
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. This amendment adds, I believe, some grants in the Health Department as well as the Department of Aging. I have a list of grants. I'm happy to go through them. It is about 20 grants long. We also have the Department of Health, if you want to speak to on any specific grant.
May I have a motion to adopt Amendment Number Three?
First to the...
Is there a second?
Rodbien, second.
Is there any discussion on Amendment Number Three? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Three.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodbien.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Three has been adopted.
Thank you. As this is an emergency ordinance, this bill can be voted on this evening with a positive vote of five council members. Is there any further discussion on Bill Number 54-24? Seeing none?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. So I ask this every year, but I'm going to ask it again. In the event that we failed to pass this with five affirmative votes, and this $14 million of fund balance and other funds is not reallocated in the way that you've done it in this bill, what's the consequence?
I believe they would be in violation of the code, if not the charter, of the departments who are over their appropriated budget.
The departments would be in violation of the code and charter for overspending their budgets.
Yeah, and I'll let maybe Ethan from the Office of Law weigh in, because I think this is a...
Yeah. Ms. Kenny.[1676.95]
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. I'm going to trust Mr. Teroux on this one because I do not generally sit in on budget things, or I may, I can look at the charter if you would like me to. But that does sound correct to me.
I think he's correct. And so, with respect to the funds that have been, that you're looking to move appropriations, my understanding is that these funds have already been expended. Is that true?
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office, some, not all.
Okay.
So, for example, the fire boat still has several million dollars that are sitting there unencumbered, waiting for appropriation.
But like the police department with their overtime. Police officers have already been paid their overtime. Fire department personnel have already been paid overtime.
It would probably be very, very, very difficult. You'd probably be pushing furloughs in order for them to, not paying employees to work if you did not appropriate these funds, to stay within their budget.
Okay.
Ms. Fiedler. Thank you, Madam Chair. Aside from the overtime, because I understand that that's nuanced, and it's necessary to have essential staff and employees in certain positions, how does a department make a decision to overspend? Is there like a note passed? Is there communication, oh, we got it somewhere else. Don't worry, you're good? How does that decision, how is it made?
Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office. We have a lot of internal communications within the Budget Office and all of my analysts in the departments. So we have quarterly check-in meetings, quarterly projections that I go through. The budget process brings up a lot of the, you know, fiscal year. I think most of the departments that are overbudgeted in this bill were projected to be overbudgeted in the budget that was presented on May 1st in the budget books with the current year projections that were in there. So I think most of that has been known for a little bit of time. I would say what we don't usually put forward is a bill that corrects all of that, because a lot can happen between, you know, April, March timeframe and now. So there's a lot of instances where things may not come in as high, may come in a little bit higher. So we tend to wait until most of the dust has settled, as late as we can. That's why it's an emergency bill, to get it as right as we can.
I appreciate that. And that was just as much for my knowledge and information as it was for the general public. So thank you.
Mr. Smith.
And I'll just, lastly, I know you mentioned quarterly. You don't, you don't do like monthly status of funds or burn rates throughout, on a monthly basis, if not, if not weekly, quite frankly, that kind of show you these, these peaks and valleys as they sort of matriculate through the fiscal year?
So I'd say the budget team is working hand-in-hand with those departments from pretty much December through the end of the fiscal year, and are speaking probably on a daily basis in some instances on what's going through. We also approve all the purchase orders that come through the queue, so we know exactly what's being spent. We get bi-weekly payroll, payroll reports that are looking at payroll trends. So the Budget Office is looking at those things daily. So, but I would say officially, we do quarterly projections.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up, I think to my colleagues who were concerned about it, I guess maybe, maybe at some point in the future, we can talk about some sort of notification that makes them aware of that, that trend. Because, because, so for example, my day job, I work in the Budget Office on Fort Meade for one of the agencies, and we certainly have status of funds reports and weekly burn rate sort of analysis that's done. So I can tell you if we're sort of on track, or certainly by mid-year or third quarter, I'm able to tell you exactly, yeah, we're going to overspend or we're not. We're going to have unexecuted funds, and you can, you can move this. But then communicate that to potentially at least our auditor, so that we can get that information back to us. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. I'm just going to chime in with my colleagues. This is something that comes up every year. It would be wonderful to come up with a process where we're not sort of left with really no options except to accept the fourth quarter transfers, which may or may not be in line with the budget that we passed the previous June, where we're, again, supposed to be the final fiscal authority. So I don't know what kind of process that, what that would look like, but I think it's time to sit down and brainstorm.
Without any further comments, it's time to call the roll. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 54-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
This process is a bit frustrating, but aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Begrudgingly, aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 54-24, as amended, has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 55-24.
Bill Number 55-24, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation, and Transfers of Funds.
Mr. Hunt, this is an Administration bill. You've got the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. With me at the table, I have Stephen Teroux from the Budget Office, Matt Stansky from the Board of Education, Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So this legislation is to make supplementary appropriations from unanticipated grant revenues and transfer appropriations between categories. There is Exhibit One summarizes the appropriation of $32.3 million within the local education fund, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Teroux or Mr. Stansky if they want to add anything else.
Thanks. For the record, Matt Stansky, Chief Financial Officer, Anorondal County Public Schools. This is our standard fourth quarter supplemental and transfer bill. It's adding additional $17.6 million. I think the auditor and her team did a nice job of describing the additional revenue and the transfers, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Fiedler.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Instructional salaries and wages, $6.6 million. At one point, I think it was last year, Dr. Baddell hasn't been here that long, he made a decision to allocate funding for teachers' bonuses, like a one-time bonus. Knowing the constant and regular concerns that we hear from educators, why not keep this in that pot of money and reallocate it in a one-time bonus or other measure?
Yeah, just, just to set the context, that category is, was appropriated at $590 million, so 6.6, about 1.1%. It's no secret to this council, some of the healthcare challenges we've had. And so, while it's not directly going to keep in teachers' pocketbooks, we are using that funding to help shore up the healthcare fund.
Thank you.
Mr. Volkey. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Stansky, last week, on a supplemental appropriation, after we cut 3.1 roughly million dollars from the Board of Education budget, we then redeployed that same amount of money back into the education budget. And one of the things we did was gave $2.1 million for teachers' overtime. But yet, here we are a week later, and we're going to take $6.6 million out of the instructional and salaries fund, and we're going to move it over, because we just had to reappropriate, or we had to appropriate money last week in the next year's budget to cover that. Now, I get that we're talking FY24, and now we're also talking FY, I understand that. I get the way the fiscal years work. But it just strikes me as very unusual, that in one week, we are adding money in because we don't have enough money to cover something that is effectively a teacher pay issue. In the following week, we're saying, well, that was for next year, but for this year, we're good. We have plenty of money. We're going to deappropriate $6.6 million and redeploy it elsewhere in a different category. If you can speak to that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. So it wasn't quite teacher overtime. Teachers are exempt employees, so it is, it's class coverage. But in fiscal '24, that line item is funded through ESER funding. And so that ESER funding, as, as we all know, is going away in fiscal '25, and so we needed the, and we're very gracious, and thank you for the, for the additional, for the reappropriing that money into that line item. But that, that's the nuance there in, in the difference.
Well, may I follow up?
You may.
Thank you. So, understanding that, your point is it's a different fund source? Is that what you're trying to say? Like basically because it's ESER funding, that's why it's different?
In the current fiscal year, it was, yes.
Is there any reason that in the current fiscal year, you couldn't use that ESER funding to cover some other, this is sort of what Councilman Fiedler was asking, but some other incentive-based pay, or like some sort of, I don't know what you want to call it, but some other way to compensate teachers, to say, this is one-time funding, but we have it, and it's in this category, and it's already allocated in this category, and we're going to find a way like Dr. Baddell has done in the past, to say even with that one-time money, we're going to do something for the teachers in this fiscal year. And I, I hear you saying that you're going to move it over to healthcare. I'm not, I'm assuming it's fixed charges?
Fixed charges, correct.
Is that what it's going to? Okay. So that's at 7.2, almost 7.3 million. So this is a piece of the pie. But I guess it's just, is this something that the union has said they prefer? They'd rather you see, they'd rather see you take the money from salaries and wages and move it over to cover the health insurance costs?
I've not heard from our labor partners as to the, where we're moving this, the transfer of this funds. I will say, Councilman Volkey.
Please, yeah.
We've been intentional around using our ESER funds over the last two fiscal years to enhance employee compensation. We did two $1,000 bonuses last fiscal, last fiscal year, fiscal '23. There's also additional bonuses paid through other ARPA dollars for special education teachers as well. And so I think we've done a, a good job between Dr. Baddell's leadership and our board's leadership of rewarding teachers when possible. It is the, but for this year, the healthcare fund was in need of additional appropriation and thought, you know, from a fiscal guy perspective, healthcare benefit is a form of compensation. And so we made the determination, and the board agreed to, to transfer those funds into fixed charges.
Ms. Raviyan.
Thank you. Is it fair to say, because one of the questions I got from a constituent, constituent was noting that the amount transferred out of the instructional salaries and wages is about half of the, I guess, shortfall from the health insurance fund? Is that, let me ballpark, it was about $13 million?
Yeah, we, I mean, we, we asked for 17. We were appropriated seven and a half. But again, this transfer is only one-time money, right? We need reoccurring money to get back into the fund in order to shore it up.
So are there any projections about whether or not this trend of increasing healthcare costs will continue? Because one of the biggest concerns that we heard from teachers in this current budget cycle was that, yes, they were very pleased to be getting step increases and a COLA, but a lot of that was being sort of wiped away by increased healthcare premiums.
Yeah, so thank you for the question. It gives me an opportunity to just explain that 1% COLA on your salary versus a potential shift in premium payments or premium increases, it's not an apples-to-apples. You know, the COLA is going to be more beneficial to you than, than a smaller shift in your premiums, which are pre-tax, in a, in a smaller number. But what I'll say is, again, we needed a combination of things to shore the fund up, and I've not seen any projections that has healthcare costs going down, both in Anorondal County Public Schools, Anorondal County Government, or nationally.
Ken, may I follow up?
You may.
There, was there any even indication that, you know, we might have just sort of hit a bump? I mean, I realize, like, long-term, we're, we're going up. That just seems to be the trend, but that there was some sort of, like, sort of post-COVID deferred health, you know, deferred healthcare?
Our trend over the last seven years has been 4.3%. Last year was an anomaly, 12.6%, right? We've, we've gone, we're closer now to 3% in fiscal '24. But because of that 12.6% bump, there is an imbalance in the fund that needs to be corrected.
If at the end of FY25, we, we do indeed see that we are looking at a bump, could we consider, I mean, is that something the board could consider as, hey, we, you know, we kind of took this money out of instructional salaries to shore up the healthcare fund? Can we go back the other way?
I don't, I don't foresee any scenario where we would remove funding from the healthcare fund. It is, it is a, an entity that continues to see increases. I will say, Ms. Raviyan, within our agreement with all of our labor partners, if the fund balance in the fund exceeds a certain threshold, an automatic premium holiday kicks in. So you have that trigger to at least help offset some of the increases in, in healthcare that our employees are going to see. But I don't, I don't foresee any scenario where we would transfer funding out of fixed charges, specifically around healthcare, just given the uncertainty and the trends that we are seeing, and, quite frankly, experts are seeing nationally.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The 6.5 million reduction in the contracted services for people transportation, could you just speak to that a little bit more? I know there's still a lot of constituents who
Yep.
have concerns about transportation, and just to help shed some light there.
Yeah, so it's a couple of things, really, Ms. Ledbetter. One, again, when we've, we've, we have significantly reduced the amount of no-service routes that we had this school year compared to last school year, obviously, which was not good. But every time a route is not run, we don't pay for it, right? And so there's, there's savings there. But since COVID, really, in, in school year 2021, we have not had good actuals to really nail down a budget. And so part of this is actually, I think the budget has just inflated a little bit in fiscal '24. And so hence, that is why you're seeing transfers out of the fund. We are paying another 10% COLA next year to our contracted providers for transportation, and there was a small increase that the council did approve in the '25 budget, and I think that'll get us more in line with our baseline budget. But that's, those are really the two driving factors in fiscal '24.
Thank you.
Ms. Hummer.
So, going back to the healthcare fund, I just want to, oop, am I not on, there we go. Going back to the healthcare fund, I just want to reiterate the, how important it is to shore up that fund and to have that solid. I served on the school board when we literally came within days of running out of money in the health, healthcare fund, which meant that employees would not have their healthcare covered when they went into the offices. And that was because previous councils had chosen to move money out of the healthcare fund to fund to other things. And so I just, every penny we put in there is going directly, that is for our employees, and that is a form of compensation to make sure that they get the solid healthcare funds, that, that healthcare coverage and service that they depend on and that they expect. So I hope that we will get to more stable, and I hope we will never again see that giant increase in the, in the cost in there. But the more we can do to shore up that fund, we will save ourselves a lot of headache. As I said, having lived through that, we don't want to go through that again.
Seeing no further comments on Bill 55-24, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 55-24. Madam Secretary, did we have any testimony from the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We do not have anyone signed up in advance to testify on Bill 55-24. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Bill 55-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 55-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 55-24.
Bill Number 55-24, An Emergency Ordinance Concerning Current Expense Budget, Board of Education, Supplementary Appropriation, and Transfers of Funds.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 55-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 55-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-24.
Bill Number 56-24, An Ordinance Concerning Conveyance of Surplus Property, Improved County-Owned Property Known As 100 Summit Avenue in Glen Burnie, Maryland.
Mr. Hunt, this is an Administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. With me at the table, I have Marnie Watson from the Real Estate Division and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So as part of the county executive's comprehensive review of all county-owned parcels to determine their use and whether continued ownership is warranted, we've identified this parcel as being surplus in excess to the county's needs. So this property is located in Glen Burnie, and is comprised of three adjacent lots at the intersection of Summit Avenue and Highland Road, measures a total distance of just over a third of an acre. Property was conveyed to Anorondal County on August 7th, 1987, from the Marley Volunteer Fire Company pursuant to articles of sale and transfer dated March 24th of that year. Property was advertised for a minimum of three weeks in a local publication for $333,500, to which no bids were received. An adjacent property owner did submit an offer to the county for $100,000. Property will be used as storage space for Expressway Pit Beef Company, which is a local business whose owners have received the, yeah, excuse me, whose owners received the invitation to bid. If the council approves, the Real Estate Division will, will proceed with selling this property in accordance with the county code. We're happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for my colleagues regarding Bill 56-24? Seeing no discussion, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 56-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
We do not have anyone signed up in advance for Bill Number 56-24. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to speak on Bill 56-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 56-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 56-24.
Bill Number 56-24, An Ordinance Concerning Conveyance of Surplus Property, Improved County-Owned Property Known As 100 Summit Avenue in Glen Burnie, Maryland.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 56-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Raviyan.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 56-24 has passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 57-24.
Bill Number 57-24, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning, Critical Area Overlay, Resource Conservation Area, Agritourism, Farm and Agricultural Heritage Sites, Special Events, and Farm or Agricultural Heritage Sites Days.
Mr. Hunt, this is an Administration bill. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the Administration. With me at the table, Kelly Krenz from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So this bill adds agritourism and farm site special events as allowed uses in the critical area resource conservation areas. These uses are already allowed elsewhere in the critical area. This bill does have the support of the Ag Commission, and if passed by the council, it will have to go to the Critical Area Commission for approval. I will note, OPZ has been I will note, OPZ has been working with the Critical Area Commission in developing the language for this bill. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments regarding Bill 57-24 from my colleagues? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill 57-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
No, Madam Chair, we did not.
I do not have anyone signed up in advance to speak on Bill 57-24. Is there anyone in the audience at this time who would like to come forward to speak on Bill 57-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Bill 57-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 57-24.
Bill Number 5724, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Critical Area Overlay, Resource Conservation Area, Agritourism, Farm or Agricultural Heritage Sites Special Events, or Farm or Agricultural Heritage Sites Days.
Any comments or questions? Last chance, colleagues, for discussion on Bill 57-24. Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 57-24.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radbien?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 5724 has passed.
Before we move into our joint hearings on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24, the council is going to take a very brief comfort break, five minutes. The council stands in recess for five minutes. I'm going to attempt to call this meeting back to order if we could. That's a trouble. You give this council five minutes and they take 20. That's true, that's true. We're about to go into Bills 27-24 as amended and 28-24 as amended. These are the two bills that comprise the Region Four Plan. I'm going to reiterate what I said at the beginning of this meeting. It's very important that we keep decorum in the chambers at all times and respect those who are speaking. If you need to make an individual conversation, I'd ask that you take it outside the chambers. This is going to be a joint hearing, but Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bills 27, 24 as amended and Bill 28, 24 as amended.
Bill Number 2724, An Ordnance Concerning General Development Plan, Region Four Plan. Bill Number 2824, An Ordnance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region Four.
This is an administration bill. Would you all like the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. With me at the table, I have Christina Pompas, Cindy Carrier, and Eric Ketterling from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Kelly Kenny from the Office of Law. So we've discussed this bill at several prior council meetings. I know there are a number of amendments we're going to discuss shortly, but just to reiterate, so this region plan process is outlined in the county code, with more detail contained in Plan 2040, which is the county's general development plan that was adopted by the county council in May of 2021. Region plans and comprehensive zoning are a major implementation piece of Plan 2040, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion regarding Bills 27-24 and Bills 28-24 at this time? We'll now open the joint public hearing on Bills 27-24 and Bill 28-24. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimony tool?
Yes, Madam Chair. We received nine pieces for Bill 2724 and 18 pieces for Bill 2824. They have been shared with the council, added to the record, and posted on the website. I would like to note that on the council homepage for legislative testimony, the button, the red button accidentally reads legislative summary when it should be legislative testimony summary, but you may find all of the written pieces there.
Thank you. We did have 23 people sign up ahead of time. I will be calling them in groups of six. After those 23 have given their two minutes, there will be an opportunity for folks who did not sign up ahead of time. I will just ask that when you come up, you state your name and address for the record, and understand you have two minutes. When the buzzer goes off, it, it means your time has been yielded. And I would hope that everybody would respect that buzzer, as we have 23 plus probably others to get through testimony. Two minutes is actually a good amount of time. Madam Secretary, I'm going to call Jennifer Jackson, Kim Greco, Darren Greco, Michelle Shonzite, Simeon Klebener, and Christopher Ms. Jackson, you have the floor.
Okay. Hello again. My name's Jennifer Jackson, and I live on Holly Avenue in Pasadena. I do split my time pretty regularly between there and the Broadneck Peninsula, which is why I'm always bringing it up. I do a lot of family care down there in Revel Downs. I'm here again about 91 to 115 Ritchie and the rezoning request there. I've said most everything before about this land, but I just want to clarify that the opposition to these lots is the change from R1 to C3, which allows for mixed use. I believe originally it was proposed for R22, and they landed on C3. Currently, these are residential properties with the exception of two of them, and my understanding is that the property owners did not request these zoning changes, even if they're listed as having requested them. As these are currently primarily single-family homes, I see no reason for this change outside of the remarks on the plan which caused for the eventual housing development options. C3 allows for that mixed use, and not only do the neighborhoods surrounding it not want it, we cannot support it in the future from an infrastructure standpoint. I do want to be clear that I support the zoning change for 25 Ritchie Highway for Prestige Auto, which is in the same section closer to the intersection. It makes sense for their business. They have a niche clientele, so I don't see it impacting traffic and neighbors. And then, just with the last few seconds of my time, I am still asking that an audit be done on property requests for zoning changes, since we've heard from residents on Shotown Road and other places that they did not request these changes. I'm also still disappointed that these plans do not include enough things to replace trees and other things that have been ripped down to put in the trail along the Broadneck Peninsula, specifically outside of Revel Downs, and what it's doing to the community there and how it's impacting them. So I would just hope that future plans would include more of that, and I just wanted on record that that is something that needs to be addressed sooner than later for them. Thank you.
Ms. Greco?
I'm Kim Greco. I live in Annapolis, Maryland on Shotown Road, and I would like to be here tonight in my support for the amendments 13 and 14 that will be introduced later. The parcels along Shotown Road and Shirleyville Road that are currently zoned RLD should stay RLD. They're consistent with the existing use, the adopted Plan 2040 Peninsula Development Policy Area and Planned Land Use, and compatible with the surrounding areas, most specifically Gold B E4, which seeks to reduce residential densities in communities located on peninsulas when feasible, and prioritize conservation of environmental features. Thank you.
Mr. Greco?
Darren Greco. I also live on Shotown Road in Annapolis, and just want to expand a little bit, as a good husband should, and agree with my wife, sitting next to me. Obviously, you've received a lot of information on it. It's not worth beating a dead horse. You're going to hear a lot from other community members, some agreeing, some opposing. So I'd like to just speak holistically for a second about, when we look at your own legislation related to Plan 2040, and in that plan, it uses the word a lot, preserve. That word is used an awful lot in that document. And so when we take a look and take a step back and we decide how are we going to preserve much of what is in there, including open space, including the community environment that comes with the uniqueness of what we have here in Annapolis in many areas, and we need to ask ourselves, are we making the best decision to support that? And I understand that's hard. These documents are written, and we step back and we go through these processes. There's many moving pieces, many agencies involved, and that's why we have these hearings, in order to find common ground. And I believe that ultimately, the amendments that are being put forth here are the right answers to balance that preservation of land use, the way it should be now, in order to preserve what our specific communities in Shirley, Shirleyville Road and Shotown Road have. And it's important for us to take a hard look at that, make these hard decisions as a council. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Shonzite?
Thank you. My name is Michelle Shonzite. I also live on Shotown Road. I am here also in support of amendments 13 and 14, which would help preserve the character of our two, our roadway Shotown Road and the adjacent Shirleyville Road. The amendment keeps the current zoning. Our property was slated for a zoning change, one that we didn't even know about until after the Office of Zoning Plan Boarding, Office of Planning and Zoning Board comment period had closed. We received our notification November 5. Many of the recommendations that were in the Office of Zoning stuff doesn't even, isn't even accurate. It suggests there's public sewer on our road. There is not. We're not even close to public sewer. And I'll be honest, I don't know that it's feasible. The nature of Shotown Road, there are currently 13 homes. It's a very, very, very narrow roadway. The roadway at the widest point is 19 feet. I literally took a tape measure. In the past month, I've moved three turtles out of the road, and the roadway gets as narrow as 17 feet and is very, very windy. The current zoning proposal, not the amendment, would allow for 89 homes to be put on our roadway. It would be a drastic change. It's not in keeping with Plan 24 at all. And it wouldn't be good for anyone in Anorondal County. The Broadneck Peninsula congestion is already significant, and adding that number of homes would only degrade everybody in the community's experience in living there. In addition, many of the wet, all of the open space that was zoned in our areas is wetlands. It's literally, you'd have to put a boat to stand there. You can't walk there. It's water. It's, it's wetlands. All of that open space was removed in this original zoning plan, and it was changed to R1. How you can build a house on stilts, I don't know in a waterway, but it doesn't make any sense, and it underscores that the Office of Zoning and Planning never even set foot on our roadway in making these recommendations. I really appreciate the council's support and in the pen, in these amendments. It makes so much sense to keep the zoning that we currently have, and it really is best for everyone in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Klebner?
Thank you. Simeon Klebner, 1440 Shotown Road. I'm here to support Amendment 13 and 14 as amended. I'd like to ask everyone in the audience who is in support of maintaining both Shirleyville Road and Shotown Road as RLD to stand. We have quite a cross-section in the community, ladies and gentlemen.
Shotown Road.
And Shirleyville, and Shirleyville. Shotown Road and Shirleyville Road. I'd like to make it clear to the council that I did not request the rezoning from RLD to R1, and we purchased this property specifically because it was RLD. I'd reiterate what a lot of other people have said, that we all feel that creating a R1 out of an RLD on both Shirleyville Road and Shotown Road will diminish the property values, reduce our, our properties. It will add to the already congested area of the Broadneck Peninsula. We have a huge problem in the Broadneck Peninsula with traffic crowding sprawl, and converting Shotown Road and adjacent Shirleyville to R1, or even in some cases, R5, would greatly exacerbate that problem. We do not have public sewer. We do not have public water. When I just talked to Ms. Pompas offline, and I appreciate her candor in the matter, she essentially said that it's in the works, and, and it's in the works, and we'll get to it, and it'll happen. But, but she doesn't know how it's going to happen and when it's going to happen, but it's in the works, and it'll happen. It might happen, but it's not my problem. I just recommend it, and then I walk away, and I drop the bomb on you, and somebody else figures out the public water and the public sewer, and what's going to happen to the wetlands. Mill Creek is home to herons, blue herons. We have foxes. We have deer. We have turtles. We have all kinds of wildlife in that area that are enjoying the benefits of being in a wetlands, in a conservation easement, in places like that. You're going to drastically change and reduce that. You're going to increase the carbon dioxide emissions in the area.
Thank you, sir.
Because of the trees, et cetera, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Foster?
Madam Chair, your most esteemed colleague, Mr. Volkey, and all members of the council. My name is Chris Foster, resident of Shotown Road. Our road is mostly zoned residential, though density now is RLD. My property is RLD. I like it to remain as such. Didn't ask for any change. I'm here to support Amendments 13 and 14, which is being introduced tonight, so that we can preserve that RLD and open space. We stand with all of our neighbors of Shirleyville that you saw tonight, and Shotown that you hear tonight, and we want to preserve that land. Thank you. Ouro.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
The next grouping of six will be Ronnie Starling, Ryan Parker, Colin Nguyen, Phil Deals, Thomas L. Cluff, and Roger Carland. Mr. Starling?
Yes, ma'am. I'm here to support Amendments 13 and 14. There's a lot of questions about how much traffic this road can hold. The road's very hilly, very sharp bends, very curvy, no sidewalks. School bus don't even come down this road due to they have no room to turn around. So all the kids got to walk this road to go to the school bus. The closest school bus stops is Whispering Woods, which is on Old Mill Bottom Road. There's no municipal water or sewer. Everybody's on well and septic. I've owned this property since 2001, and this is the first time I ever heard of somebody wanting to change zoning. I like for it to stay RLD. I didn't ask for no change. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ryan Parker, and I'm here for the address of 473 Broadneck Road in Arnold. So I'm going to address three things. One being elderly parents, the second being financial freedom, and the last thing being generational wealth. My parents currently have a home under RLD, and we're looking to turn it into a R2 property, so that I may possibly build a home and be closer to my parents in that area. And my mother inherited this land from her father, which is something that was able to help her create general wealth, generational wealth with, with our family. And with me having a brother, you know, my parents have recently have to come to the decision of who do we leave the land to? And me and my brother both are like, we both kind of want it. You know, so there's, we're in a situation now where we'd like to change it from the RLD to the R2, so that my brother can inherit the home that my parents already own there, and my wife and I can also build our own home on that land as well. And it's a lot of talk about retirement going on. It's stressing me out. But my wife's actually an attorney in Boston, so she travels to Boston from Tuesday through Thursday every week. And I have a young son, which my mom helps me out, and my dad helps me out with a lot, but it would be a lot more help, you know, if we were living there with them. And us being able to sell our current home, we have enough equity to fully get out of debt. So we'd be in a situation where I could retire my wife before she's 40, and she can stay at home and school my son. She was a teacher that turned into a lawyer, and she wants to homeschool my son. And he wants that, you know, and I want to make that happen for both of them. So if you guys would allow, you know, my mom's application to go through, and it passed from the RLD to the R2, it would totally change our family's life generationally. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nguyen?
Good evening. My name is Colin Nguyen of Odenton, but I'm addressing the council tonight in my role as chairman of the Board of the Anorondal Fish and Game Conservation Association, which has been located off of St. Margaret's Road since 1939. I wish to speak in favor of the Santa Boni's request for commercial rezoning of their property on Ferguson Road. Anorondal Fish and Game hosts dozens of events a year that are open to both our members and to the public at large. Many of our members are local to the area, but a significant number come from farther away. Public visitors to our monthly events come from as far as Virginia and Pennsylvania, and for our larger events which occur throughout the year, we attract regional participation from an even wider area than that. from an even wider area than that. Commercial development of the area along Ferguson Road would provide a welcome increase in amenities for those visitors to our club. For example, dining options or possibly overnight lodging for guests would be a significant attraction. With all due respect to the fine folks at Red Hot and Blue, a little bit of variety would be very nice. Having these amenities located near the club, right next to the highway, and alongside the only commercial presence that currently exists in that area would be ideal. Now, AAFNG is surrounded by homes, and we've worked very hard to maintain a good coexistence with our neighbors. The Santa Boni land, however, is the only residential property on the north side of the club, and it's the only residential property that's actually proximate to our lands. The other residential areas are separated by Mill Creek, or St. Margaret's Road, or the large swath of forest and wetlands between us and Old Mill Bottom Road. Commercial rezoning of the Ferguson Road property would result in a situation that is more compatible with the routine activities of AAFNG, particularly our weekend public events. We believe this would allow for an even better coexistence between AAFNG and the eventual users of that rezoned area. Thank you, Madam Chair.
My name is Thomas Clough. I live in 1218 Destiny Circle, about five minutes from the, I'm a member of the AAFG Club. I live about five minutes away, and I agree with our chairman here, just all his points. It's a very active club. We get a lot of visitors. I've been a shooter, I would say, all my life except the first 10 years, and I enjoy the opportunity of taking my grandchildren there, and my friends and neighbors, and I'm even teaching my wife how to shoot. And making all the surrounding properties commercial would be to our benefit, and I'd like to see the council vote in favor of that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dalez?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. Phil Dalez, Dalez Associates, Land Uslaw, here on behalf of Anarundel Fish and Game. As you've just heard in the prior two testimonies, we're here to support our neighbors at 161 Ferguson Road in their applications for either R2 or R4 zoning. We also submitted recently a petition with 45 club members having signed it, out of respect for your time and not having 45 others come to testify. In all directions from 161, you'll find commercial or vacant properties. And of course, Route 50 is less than 500 feet from the northern edge of Ferguson Road. There's a convenience store property approximately 200 feet from 161 Ferguson Road. To the northeast, and then to the west, there's car dealerships, properties that are approximately 400 feet. And Anarundel Fish and Game is immediately adjacent, non-residential, to the south. So you've heard from the prior two members of the club that a change to commercial zoning would facilitate more compatible use at 161 Ferguson with the activities of the club. I would also add that the Planning Advisory Board unanimously recommended the commercial zoning at C4 for those same good reasons, and also some other reasons the property owners themselves have noted in their applications. Finally, without the existence of public sewer for these properties, these properties will only accommodate the less intensive commercial uses and not the more expansive commercial developments that some of the opposition may be concerned about. So while these commercial uses are modest, they are also well-needed, and they're more appropriate to this property than low-density residential that the current owners are asking it to be changed from. So thank you very much. We hope that you'll support our neighbors' applications to C2 or C4.
Thank you. Mr. Carland?
Good evening. Roger Carland, 202 Drum Avenue North, Pasadena. Eight years ago, with virtually no money out of pocket, thanks to the VA, I was able to purchase my own. And as a single father to identical twin girls, being able to call Drum Avenue my home was a dream come true. My home was and still is a fixer-upper, but it has and hopefully will continue to provide me with sweat equity. Just over two weeks ago, I married my dream girl, and we've blended our families. We now have four teenage daughters. We have spent about $8,000 on plans to add a roughly $250,000 addition to our home. You may ask why not just move in by a bigger house? That's how awesome our community is. We love it there. Even with the rumble of traffic from the Route 100 and occasionally very loud jake break from an 18-wheeler, we still love it. What we don't love is the constant sound of grinding and screening equipment and backup alarms in our back and front yards. I oppose a rezoning that is outlined in Bill 27-24 and Bill 28-24, as it pertains to 201 Amber Drive, changing the zoning from R1 to W2, application CZR4PAS602. Mr. Volkey and Mr. Newton seem intent on moving this operation even closer to my home. And to make it even worse, they want to clear 25 forested acres that gives us at least a little protection from the rumblings of the surrounding highways. I fully understand Mr. Newton's interest in doing this. It is a financial gain, and it does not affect him. Regardless, I understand his desire to make even more money, and I do not understand Mr. Volkey's motivation. I asked him at this meeting last week, but he ignored my question. The Anarundel Office of Planning and Zoning recommends keeping this property, 201 Amber Drive, as R1. The county Planning Advisory Board also recommends leaving the property as R1 due to its land use being consistent with the surrounding area. They agree that residential development would have far less of an impact on that area. I would rather see homes built than to turn my neighborhood into industrial area. Mr. Volkey, we've put you in office for two terms. This is how you repay your consistency? Thank you.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. I'll call up the next six individuals that signed up ahead of time. Mr. William Romano, Kyle Bodenhorn, Wes Jones, Tracy Nicole Charles Steck, and Kurt Svensson. Mr. Romano?
My name's Bill Romano. I live on Crummell Avenue in Annapolis. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Anarundel Fish and Game Commission to support the Santa Boni's request to have their property rezoned from residential to commercial. I did a quick check on the Maryland Real Estate Property Taxation site, and I saw that there are nine parcels on Ferguson Road, and eight of them are already zoned as commercial. The only one that's residential is the Santa Boni property. It's like there's this little island of residential land surrounded by all this commercial property. It just seems that they're kind of out of conformity with the other uses, and by rezoning it, it would kind of make some more sense to have them, you know, rezone commercial and bring them into conformity with the other land in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Kyle Bodenhorn?
Good evening. My name's Kyle Bodenhorn, and I live at 202 Drum Avenue South in Pasadena in the Selby Grove community. I'm here this evening to offer my testimony in opposition to council application CZR4PAS602, an amendment to Bill 2824, being sponsored by Mr. Volkey but has yet to be introduced. This amendment would change the zoning land use of 201 Amber Drive from R1 to W2 industrial. This property is currently owned by CLM Materials and is directly adjacent to our community with over 100 houses and approximately 400 residents. If this zoning is changed, the expansion will result in the removal of more than 80% of the trees on this 25-acre piece of property and a placement of additional very noisy equipment used for mulch grinding. The Office of Planning and Zoning has recommended leaving the property zoned R1. The Planning Advisory Board recommended the same. The Magathie River Association also is against this change, citing high potential for damage to Lake Waterford. Thirty-six members of Selby Grove spoke during a meeting with CLM and Mr. Volkey on the 11th. Despite opposition from all of these groups, and now his constituents, Mr. Volkey appears intent to push this rezoning through. He has previously introduced Bill 7723, which provided special exceptions for those wood recycling facilities in this residential area. This bill allowed them to expand greatly despite its location. In my opinion, Mr. Volkey has previously put the desires of CLM ahead of the best interests of my community. When you combine that with his cavalier and nonchalant attitude during our meeting, it has me genuinely worried that my concerns and those of my neighbors will not be adequately represented and are falling upon his deaf ears. It's for that reason I stand, I am before this county council to ask on record that you act in the best interest of my community if he introduces this council application.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Wes Jones?
Good evening. I appreciate it, Madam Chair. My name is Wes Jones. I live at 312 Delma Avenue, Pasadena, Selby Grove 2 community. I'm also speaking about the property at 201 Amber. It is currently 25 heavily wooded acres. That is a watershed of the Magathie Creek, which is the headwaters of Magathie River, the Magathie River. I'm not going to repeat what you heard here and what you will hear. I'm going to ask very politely, council, please, leave the property zoned R1. You've heard and you will hear, our community stands united and resolute in demanding, Mr. Volkey, that you cease your activities associated with converting this property to industrial use and immediately begin fighting any and all efforts associated with the industrial expansion of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tracy Nicole?
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Tracy Nicole. I live in Severna Park. My home is in the community of Cypress Landing, which opens onto Ritchie Highway, and is down from the properties that Planning and Zoning proposed to change the zoning categorization for, from, I believe, residential to commercial. So I want you to understand that our community is a residential community. Those properties are also residential, despite the misperception that everything on Ritchie Highway must be commercial. I am the president of our homeowners association, and as a community, we are vehemently opposed to any proposed zoning changes to those properties. Thank you for your time, and I ask that you maintain the zoning of those properties. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Charles Steck?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Charlie Steck, and I live on Bayfront Terrace at Pedigree Point. I'm here tonight to urge you not to upzone Pedigree Point from an MA3 yacht club to an MA2 commercial marina as proposed in 2824. And I just want to make three points. Number one, there are 132 commercial marinas in Anarundel County. There are nine yacht clubs. This is the only yacht club proposed for upzoning from MA3 to MA2. And the rationale, apparently, is because Safe Harbor, the owner of the yacht club, requested it after failing to obtain an even higher level of upzoning. Second point, since Safe Harbor purchased our yacht club two years ago, it has been operating as if it already were a commercial marina in violation of existing zoning requirements. We've experienced not only increased traffic in our community due to its operations, but also new activities, fuel sales, boat rentals, and charter operations, which are not permitted under its existing MA3 zoning. By its own admission, Safe Harbor is not in the business to be a good neighbor to the communities it serves. It's in business to make money, and that means expanded services, sales, and development that are in direct conflict with our neighborhood, as well as with the laudable environmental, neighborhood preservation, and health, safety, and livable community goals of Plan 2024. A community marina, as you've heard from others, is not compatible with the existing character of our neighborhood. These are principal requirements for development in peninsula areas under the 2024 plan. We're a residential community with less than 50 homes, with no public sewer, water, no fire hydrants, and only a single small road for access and egress. We're also extremely vulnerable to sea level rise, making a commercial marina with all the expanded uses permitted under MA2 zoning a further environmental threat to our community. We urge you to retain the MA3 zoning for this yacht club. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Svensson?
I'm Kurt Svensson, Arnold, Maryland. The purpose of my testimony is to again express my support for Amendment Number 13 to Bill 2824. I'm referring to 1352 Shirleyville Road. I support maintaining RLD zoning for this property consistent with the PAB recommendation. The planning and zoning rationale for this change to R1 zoning is not convincing. It's a stretch to suggest this change will increase the supply of affordable housing. It's not a stretch that 11 new single-family homes will add stress to the abutting, winding rural roadway and feeder schools. The county should be more concerned about the existing homeowners on the other side of the street who are at a real risk of being gentrified out. There's a lot of RLD-zoned property in this specific area, and our vision for this area is not to see it all upzoned R1. That's not what we want for the Broadneck Peninsula. Enough is enough. This is why I'm opposed to this upzoning. It's a slippery slope. It's not really going to generate affordable housing. It's just going to stress our local road infrastructure and schools. Thank you.
This panel is dismissed. I have five more individuals that signed up ahead of time. Holly Carland? Oh, gosh. Thank you. Rosario Isquierdo. I should have said it like 12 times during the last two weeks. Richard Brill, Bruce Shields, Amy Leahy. It really is a beautiful name.
Good evening. My name's Holly Carland. I'm a resident of 202 Drum Avenue North in the Selby Grove community in Pasadena. I'm here along with several of my neighbors and friends to express my extreme opposition to the proposed amendment to Bills 2724 and 2824 specifically pertaining to the zoning and use at 201 Amber Drive. I understand that this land is currently owned by Chesapeake Landscape Materials and Mr. Wayne Newton, and is located directly adjacent to my community in Selby Grove. My husband, Roger Skip Carlin, has been the owner of 202 Drum Avenue North for roughly eight years now with his two twin daughters. After we got engaged back in 2022, I sold my own home in a different district of Anarundel County and moved into this amazing community with my two daughters. As Skip and I had plans to add a substantial addition to his home, a self-proclaimed fixer-upper, to accommodate our new family of six. Adding on to this home was our choice instead of moving because of the school district, the lovely wooded lot, and the stream that feeds Lake Waterford right in our backyard, not to mention the best neighbors you could ever ask for. We knew adding on to this home would be more affordable than trying to find a new home in times of rising interest rates and real estate prices. We were sure that we would have a superior return on our investment many years later when we were empty nesters and retirees looking for a return on our investment to downsize in our golden years. So we began working with the draftsman to work up plans for our dream home, spending nearly $8,000 to devise a perfect plan for a quarter-million-dollar home. Even with the constant low hum of traffic on Route 100 and the occasional big-engine car or jake break of an 18-wheeler, we love our community and our home and knew we could finish raising our daughters here. And the passing of this bill could change our future, and not for the better. As those of us spoken before may have expressed, we don't love the daily sounds heard in our backyard of heavy equipment, backup alarms, and overfill construction site noise and disruption, which will get exponentially worse with the passing of these two bills, that will allow the clearing of nearly 25 acres of trees to provide us with little protection we do have from this noise pollutant and allowing the operation to move even closer to our home. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening and hearing my opposition to this important matter for my family.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Isquierdo?
Yes, I'm Rosario Isquierdo, but today I'm representing Stephanie Joy, a resident of Pedigree Point and yacht club member since 1996. In 2020, the Koch Brothers backed Safe Harbor Marinas. A real estate investment trust was bought by Sun Communities for $2 billion. That's two with nine zeros. At the time, Safe Harbor owned 99 marinas. A year later, they bought our MA3-zoned yacht club for a mere $2.7 million, the cost of a single-family waterfront home. Now, Safe Harbor is the largest owner of marinas in the world, with more than 130 marinas, 10 in Maryland. That's a 30% jump. They are on their way to becoming a virtual monopoly. They are all about profit. They rent real estate if they can, and rent marina slips to any one of their 40,000 worldwide boating network. They ignore zoning and our safety. They surreptitiously sell fuel from pickup trucks, including one registered in Delaware, run a boat rental club, host huge events that crowd our No Outlet Road, charter headboat fishing ships with all the mess and smell that creates. They significantly raise prices for membership, boat storage, and pool use, even tried to prevent residents from walking on the beach without paying. Community members are being priced out of our marina yacht club. In October 23, Safe Harbor's representative Dalez Associates wrote the Planning Advisory Board that MA2 was consistent with the current use of the property. Contrary to his assertions, MA3 is, in fact, more consistent than MB zoning or MA2. He claims that Safe Harbor does not contemplate using the most egregious permits in MA2. That's not at issue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Richard Brill?
Hi, I'm Richard Brill. I live at 2105 Bayfront Terrace. And I guess you've heard a lot of the agreements and the arguments, and we've been here several times, but what I'd like to concentrate on is just a couple of points. Number one, we certainly appreciate everybody's efforts to come to an agreement between the community and Safe Harbor's. But I think we're out of time, and I don't think that's possible. This is a multi-billion-dollar corporation, as Charlie has said, and we're Kennedy residents. I think the council here should look at what's good for Anarundel County. And if you go back and look at the history, there's several things. The direction when the zoning was, direction for the 2040 plan, the zoning was to analyze small-scale, non-conforming marinas in residential areas to determine whether a new zoning district and requirements should be established that are more compatible with the surrounding community. I don't think anyone in their right mind could say that MA2 would be more compatible with our community. The other thing, all previous zoning requests for this property that go back as far as 50 years have denied any zoning changes. That's a big thing. Number two, your own planning and zoning, as recent as six months ago, said that zoning should not be changed. And the Broadneck Council of Communities, which includes all the Broadneck communities, also recommends not making the zoning change. So I think with all this history, the problem is negotiating with a billion-dollar corporation, that's for today only and today only. It's not for years down the road. I think I'd like to ask the county to look what's best for Anarundel County for the next 10, 20, 30 years, and not just what this one corporation wants to do with this small marina, which is definitely not consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bruce Shields?
That's me. Bruce Shields, I live at 208 Marfox Court off St. Mark's Road. I'm here representing myself, my property address, as well as a member of the Anarundel Ground Fishing Game. I'm flying without notes, so pardon any rambling. Just want to make a couple of points. One, Anarundel County has a pretty long history of flopping back and forth between commercial and residential. Doll's Corner, right next to us, was a gas station, a home, Anne's Market in Arnold, Belvedere Market in Belvedere. To change the 161 Ferguson property to commercial seems to fit with that. My property has forest conservation easements on it. We abut to critical area. That property's kind of in the same position, except they're unencumbered by the forest conservation or the critical area, but yet they're surrounded by it. It's a well-protected little oasis, if you want to call it that. So in addition to the point of view stated by our chairman, our member, and our council, I'm supportive of that also.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Amy Leahy?
Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I'm Amy Leahy, and I live in Severna Park, and I'm speaking tonight as the vice president for Public Affairs for Greater Severna Park Council. But also, I'm going to talk a little bit about my participation as a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee that reviewed the Plan 240 that ultimately was adopted into the general development plan. So we spent two years working on that. I was one of approximately 21 people that was appointed by County Executive Stuart Pittman. Our job was to attend weekly meetings with the staff of OPZ to review and comment on what they brought before us. The first year we spent being given detailed information by each county department, from police and fire all the way down to economic development and community development, each department, each week, well, a department each week, sent a contingent of staff to the meetings. I tell you this because it seemed to serve no purpose for the job that we were tasked with, which was to review and come up with recommendations for Plan 240. It dragged the process out to the point of being rushed at the end of our time limit, ultimately forcing Planning Advisory Board and the county council to make hasty decisions. During this time of Plan 240, the county solicited landowners who desired zoning changes to fill out an online request form. There were some small businesses in R2 zoning on Ritchie Highway who took advantage of that, and then in talking with them, it was realized that their goals really could be met with getting the small business designation rather than commercial. This falls in line with the original small-area plans adopted by the county council 20 years ago that would keep portions of Ritchie Highway more residential-looking and not looking like sections of Pasadena and Glen Burnie that are all concrete and glass buildings. The county planners, during the stakeholder advisory committee meetings, recommended commercial for businesses that did not request it. And also, which also goes against the small-area plans for the community that 20 years ago were community-driven, not promoted by staff planners who have no connection to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Leahy. Bless you. Sir, I believe you were the one that was not signed up ahead of time?
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, counsel. I'm sorry, good evening, counsel and staff. My name is Jason Kraut, General Manager at Sheehy Lex of Annapolis, 121 Ferguson Road, here supporting the Santa Pony's request to rezone their property, 161 Ferguson Road, to C4. Currently, Ferguson Road's corridor is already home to several car dealerships, convenience store, gas station, restaurant, and, as you've already heard, a shooting club. So if this area is converted, it could offer site and location opportunities and possible parking relief to the current and similar businesses. Quite frankly, given its proximity to Route 50 and its commercial presence already, Ferguson Road represents an industrial artery more than a residential neighborhood entrance. Just please consider this when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. At this time, that concludes the folks who have signed up in advance. So if there are other folks in the audience who are here to testify on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24, come forward. We've got six seats. We'll continue to cycle through, so. I'm going to start here.
Hello, I'm Brick Rizwald. I live at 823 Holly Drive East, out on the Broadneck. Tonight, I'm here representing the Broadneck Council of Communities. I just want to quickly tell people that we agree with the amendments that will be proposed by Amanda Fiedler on the north side of Route 50. We are, in general, do not like to see upzoning. We have traffic. We have environmental concerns that we think are not improved by increasing density. The thought that a one-acre property will, a zoned one-acre, excuse me, 11 acres zoned as one-acre properties will provide affordable housing is a bit ludicrous. It will not happen. The waters of No Creek are protected by the large, open area north of Route 50. It's the watershed for that creek, and we do not want to see it densified. For Pedigree Point, we agree that it should remain a yacht club. It should not move to a higher commercial density. The community cannot support that. Orchard Beach, on the south side of Route 50, is in a small community that wants to have MA2. The new MA1B would be more appropriate. And finally, Ferguson Road. The discussion here tonight makes it sound like the place a hopping with big buildings. If you look at the road, it's all woods on the side they want to develop. This is, basically, would be cutting a notch into the forested area that's south of Route 50. We don't want that.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? State your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
I'm going to borrow this. My name is Mary Daniels. I live at 1473 Shotown Road. I am here in support of R1 for Shotown Road and also R1 for Shirleyville, but I first want to speak about my property at 1475 Shotown, which is currently zoned R5 and OS zoning for open space. First, I'd like to educate my neighbors just a little on Shotown Road being R1 because July 1, 1952, Shotown Road was agricultural. Then Bill 173-72, in 1973, it became R1. And the area where I live is R5 because it's subdivision behind it. Then, on February 13, 1989, it was, my land was R5 at 02. And what happened is Shotown Road, 1989, they changed the whole road to RLD, except for my partial because of Whispering Woods being directly behind it. So when my new neighbors speak about, let's keep it RLD, I think they're not considering the fact that our ancestors was on that property, and it was meant for legacy. And so when you limit from R1 to RLD, then you say no more legacy, because it's one home per five acres, my understanding of RLD. R1, I believe, one home per acre if you have septic and well. If you have public utility, I believe they still hold you to one home. My neighbors seem to believe that you can put townhomes in a RL1 zoning, which is 100% incorrect. You cannot put townhomes in a R1, excuse me, in a R1 zoning. So there's no threat of townhomes to Shotown Road. Shirleyville Road, again, same thing, agricultural in 1952. Then it became R1 in 1973. Then in 1989, it became RLD. I feel like the RLD zoning is limiting particularly to African-American families.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Do I have to take that? Yes.
Hi, my name is Emily Klebner. I live at 1440 Shotown Road. I support Amendment 14 and 13 to keep our current zoning. So the ecosystem, like, it works like a tree. Everything's connected. Like, the roots are connected to other trees, and that's also how they talk. And if we cut some down trees, they can't warn other trees that there's a disease coming or something like that. And there are many animals that are at the marsh back there, like foxes and deer and all kinds of different things, like maybe even pawns nails. And I just want to say that I like nature, and I just don't want to see that all the trees being cut down. And that's all I have to say.
Very good, Emily.
Thank you.
I was once, I was once Emily. I lived back there, felt the same way.
Thank you, everybody.
Still do.
Ma'am?
Okay. I'm Mary Vogelsang. I live at 30 Margaret Avenue in Pasadena, and I'm here to testify about the property of its own CZR4SVD-603, which is 238 to 242 Ritchie Highway. They want to change it from C1 to small business. I see a problem with that because it's a residential area. There are small areas of business, but not large areas. There's seven houses on one side of it, houses on the other side of it. My community is all residential, and if you're coming down Ritchie Highway to make a turn, as they will be doing if it's going to rent a small business, it's going to increase the traffic on the highway. And there is a new development being done, homes being built on Ritchie Highway going north before the firehouse that is already, they're all going to be using the same turnaround in the highway. There is a highway light at early heights, and then a turnaround down the road. It's all going to be the same turnaround site. So I think that they should maintain it as C1 and not 4, C5, small business. It's residential, and the traffic is already horrible on our highway anyway.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My turn. Hi, I'm Jack Koka. I live at 2115 Bayfront Terrace, right across from the marina. Lefty's my wife. I just want to say that I oppose changing the zoning. Go figure. And, but I'll really, a little background, in 1962, Ted Martens formed a corporation to buy land and build housing. He built the Pedigree Point Yacht Club on lots 4, 5, and 6 of the plot to attract buyers with membership. The corporation later dissolved, and Martens took over. The property was in a community marina. In 1985, Martens sold it to Jerry Hurson. He changed the name to Pleasure Cove Yacht and Beach Club and charged for storing boats, trailers, and pool use, but the community was free to access the beach and clubhouse. In 66, Jerry sold it and bought a different club called Pleasure Cove. The new owners, Bill and Sherry McCollions, changed the name back to Pedigree Point Yacht and Beach Club. But when Bill died, Sherry had a hard time managing, and especially during COVID. In 2021, she sold to the Koch Brothers-backed Safe Harbor Marinas for $2.7 million. What a steal, as an MA3-zoned property. Safe Harbor Real Estate Investment Trust is worth $2 billion. Also, I have a question. Does the Planning and Zoning Board people live in Anarundel County? They do? They don't go around and look at what this zoning is and where they are? I mean, look at the Shirleyville people and all the place. What is with this board? I mean, how do you get to this board? I don't know.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Thank you, Jack. Hi, my name is Julia Langfett, and I live next to Jack and also next to the marina. Last October, Safe Harbor's lawyer rescinded the request for an MB zoning, heavy industry, to an MA2 light industry. This is a classical bargaining tactic. Ask for less, ask for more, settle for less, and then exploit it anyway. In the last two summers, Safe Harbor zoned MA3, as you've heard many times, has been running it as a business as an MA2, boat rentals, gas delivery from the back of pickup trucks, and fishing charters. Remember, this marina is on septic and well. Why would zoning and planning say that this property could handle this burden? Why? A week ago, the community of Pedigree Point sat down with three employees of Safe Harbor in an attempt to discuss a restrictive covenant we've been said no to. Thank you for attending, Mrs. Fiedler. During this meeting, they shared plans for their future development, boat lifts, improvements on the boat storage units, a new riprap, and floating docks. Floating docks that are no doubt being manufactured at Safe Harbor's other, one of its other marinas in Port Royal, South Carolina. Port Royal was promised to the community to be a showcase facility with restaurants, housing, fuel tanks, lovely landscaping, and pickleball. Instead of utopia, Port Royal got dock manufacturing and death. After a young man was fatally crushed at the manufacturing site, the town sent a notification to Safe Harbor saying that dock manufacturing exceeded the scope of permitted light industrial use and was in violation of the planning and urban development. They demanded that Safe Harbor stop this manufacturing activity and remove its equipment. Guess what Safe Harbor is still doing?
This panel is dismissed. At this time, we can have anyone else in the audience who's still looking to testify on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24 to come forward. who's still looking to testify on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24 to come forward. We're going to start from my right and continue down. Ma'am, state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes.
At this point, I'm speaking on behalf of my mother. Her name is Annie Watts and she lives at 1349 Shirleyville Road, which is right across from the 1352 Shirleyville Road that we're addressing. And we want to thank Councilwoman Felder for possibly introducing the bill tonight. And hopefully she'll get the support of her colleagues. So what my mother wanted to say, which I had told her one morning when she was lying in bed, I said, Mom, you got to go to a hearing for us. She said, what? I said, well, they're going to make 10 to 33 homes on Miss Constance Field. Miss Constance has been gone for over 50 years, but we still call it Miss Constance Field. And she said, oh, no, Miss Shirley would not let that happen. And I said, because Shirley is the name of the road, Shirleyville. They named it after Miss Shirley, her next-door neighbor. My mom's been in that community since she was 21 years old. She raised seven kids there. She went there when 21 years old with her Korean War veteran husband. She came in with a six-month-old baby and a two-year-old son. And she's been there all the time. She's 91 years old now. And I'll read her state because I can talk and I'll be next. So what my mom wanted to say that, so she talked to her daughter, and you guys may know her once I say her name. And she says, well, you know, she's a protective mother. So she said, because her daughter can't be here, she said she'll read it. And what she wants to say is, on May the 17th, my daughter, Linda Watts Brown, received an email from Councilwoman Felder. In general, the email stated there were proposed zoning changes from RDL to R1. Planning Advisory Board recommended it to be RDL. And that is what my mother asked you to accept, the Planning Advisory Board recommendation. However, the Office of Planning and Zoning recommended it to be R1 and included the reasons for the change. On May the 22nd, my daughter responded to the request to hear the community and ask the following questions centered around the reasons for recommendations to change to R1. One, supply affordable housing. What is the, and actually what we're asking is the response for this. I know it won't be answered tonight, but at some point. What is the estimated cost range of affordable housing specifically for Shirleyville area? Affordable housing, what impact is taxes for existing low, moderate-income residents that reside in Shirleyville Road? Designated community opportunities? When was Shirleyville designated as a community of opportunity? What are the criteria for community to be disengaged as a community of opportunity? Is the community notified of this designation? What is the future date for the planned public sewer? When was this area provided for public sewer? It would be extremely beneficial to residents to know the timeframe, especially if a potential need to place private sewer.
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to summarize here because the two minutes have already-
Oh, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, mother, oh, I do, I'm going to summarize this. My mom is freezing cold and it's past her bedtime.
Sure.
But this, but this is important to her. And as you see, it was a challenge for her to get here.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here. Sir?
I'm Ed Listman, 8395 Country Life Road in Pasadena. I'm in favor of Bill 21. It involves Listman Store. It's a parking lot, little history. Grandpop and grandmom Listman established Listman Store in 1928. Back then, it's a quarter-acre lot that the store itself sits on. And it encompasses the entire lot. So back then, 28 in the 30s, like we see Humphrey Bogart movies, the cars, Model A's, back in the time, the cars would park out on the street. So there was no problem, nobody bothered anything. And as the neighborhood flourished, foreigners, a lot of foreigners back then, as neighborhoods flourished and the streets improved, you couldn't park out on the streets, so they needed a parking lot. Grandpop Listman was very, had a very good friend who owned 44 West Early Heights Road, which is in questionnaire. He allowed him through the 30s and 40s to park in the parking lot. So I guess he figured that grandpop's using it anyway. He sold him the land in late 40s. And it's been used by the Listman family, three generations, as a parking lot. We had trailers on the land. When I was born in December of 57, we resided on top of the store. And so I can remember back mid 60s, early mid 60s. We had trailers, commercial trailers. We sold hay, feed, straw, fertilizer. And so things were being sold out, the two trailers, like tractor-trail trailers, and all through the years. So anyway, it's very important. Doug and Cindy Schaefer sold the land to them, the store and that 44. It's very important that this parking lot gets rezoned for Listman Store to flourish again. Also, they surrounding land around 44 West Early Heights. We own, the missus and I, I said we, we, we own two sides. We own that land. So there's no conflict with any of the neighbors. And the other two sides, it's Light Street and Early Heights Road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
My name is Fayhant Jones and I'm representing 1460 Shotown Road and 1450 Shotown Road. This, the gentleman talked about, and Mary Daniels also talked about generational wealth in land-owning. And this land has been in my family. My great, my grandmother gave it to us. She got it from her grandmother. And her mother was a slave. So that's how many generations it has been in our family. And my sister now, she is, has to move back to Maryland. She was, she's now a retired lieutenant colonel in the Army. She served over in the Gulf. But now she is suffering with a neurological condition. And she wants to, well, she has to move back. In fact, I'm going to get her in July to bring her back. But she doesn't want to, you know, rent. And her son has moved from Missouri to help to take care of her. But because the property has changed zoning to something that we didn't ask for, RLD, that I can't give her part of the property that's, you know, that's been in our family for years to build a home. So like I said, I'm not asking for upzoning. I'm just wanting to, our property to be changed back to the R1 so we can continue our family to build on our property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Keisha Ricks. I live at 1462 Shotown Road. As my aunt said, as well as my cousin, Mary Daniels, and some other family members, we have been on our properties for multiple generations, since the 1800s. I have lived, lived on my property ever since I was a small child. I have, I don't know anything else outside of Shotown Road. My grandmother left it to us as a family compound, which we are still here today. We are still here today. We're not asking for anything additional. We have not done any type of property conversions to intrude on anyone. I own portion of Shotown Road. It's not a county road like some people believe. I have granted access to multiple family members to be able to go to their homes. I want to be able to leave my property to my children. I have 13 acres. And currently, it was zoned R1 when my grandmother subdivided and made it a family compound. And then 1989, it was rezoned to RLD, which severely hindered us being able to develop on our property. Again, we're not asking for anything additional than what was already granted. And building a home or two in addition to what we have is not a problem. It's, we can't build a community. We can't build a city. I'm not sure where that mine, you know, where that thought process comes from. But we're just asking for additional lots so that we can continue to carry on our legacy of being able to be on our property. And we have done that with no issues. We have not cut down trees. We have not built any neighborhoods. We have not done nothing. We have watched and wait, you know, we have seen new neighborhoods being built. I have been bullied on a lot of my property currently. And I have never, ever asked for anything other than what has already been granted. So I am in favor of R1. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Oh, this one? Sorry. Okay. Thanks. My name is Zach Goldman. I live on Rockstutter Drive in Arnold, behind Fishbaus. I grew up in Arnold on the other side by Broadneck Elementary. I'm here in favor of the rezoning of 1212 Ritchie Highway, which is the property across from the Y and Anarunta Community College. Two reasons that I wanted to bring up here is I think it should be zoned properly for what it is and what it has been for the last 32 years, which is a veterinary hospital. It was given a special exception in 1992 to be a veterinary hospital and it has been operating as such since then. So I think it seems logical and reasonable to just be brought to its current use. I think a specific part of Ritchie Highway, this specific part of Ritchie Highway has evolved over the last 20, 30 years. Specifically, something worthy of note is there's now a four-way stoplight at this particular intersection. Cars are stopped to go north and south on Ritchie Highway. Another light coming out of Big Vanilla or the Y and Anarunta Community College to go north and south on Ritchie Highway. And then the Animal Hospital property has a light. So I don't really think it's reasonable that, you know, most properties that are houses don't have traffic lights that allow them to come in and out of their driveway. Commercial properties do. So again, I think that's just logical and reasonable. And the last thing I wanted to say is just something that I've heard a little bit of, which might be the concern, which would be development or me flipping this property to some big-time developer. I just wanted to address that. I'm not a developer. I'm not a flipper. I have a very long-term view in mind and I plan to own this property for the next 30-plus years and quite possibly forever so that it stays within my family. And I think that's all I got. I didn't get beat by the bell.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name's Dave Kaufman, 331 Gambles Road, Gambles, Maryland. I'm in here to speak in support of 161 Ferguson Road. A lot of people spoken before me, so they've taken a lot of the things I had prepared. But I would point out a couple of things they didn't. 60% of this property is already in a conservation easement. The state, the people that are worried of, the gentleman was worried about cutting trees down. The state mandate law, any wooded lot today has to remain 40% wooded. There's a bill currently being discussed to change that from 40% to 50%. It is a, if it becomes a commercial piece of property, it's got those limitations. It's not served by public water and sewer. One of the gentlemen earlier spoke of it becoming a restaurant. But I think in Anarunta County, it becomes 50 gallons of septic per seat. And you can have a maximum of 5,000 gallons of septic on a lot if it can perk for that. Most likely, it will not. They've set as one of nine lots there and they've been surrounded and witnessed a change in the character of the neighborhood many times. And this is the only piece of property that's in there that's residential. If you go there to Lexus or any of those dealers there, Red Hot and Blue, you'll go pretty much any time of the day, there's cars parked on both sides of the road. It's definitely a commercial entity. There's nobody would want to live and reside in, with all that commercialism around there. So anyway, I want to support this. And I think from a county point, point of view, if you look, if you're looking for C4 zoning, there is almost none available in the county. They've got a lot of businesses that are looking to come, but there's no zoning for them. So I think for that reason, you ought to support it as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. At this time, we can have six more people. There are six, there are clearly six more people. Ma'am, you've just spoken. Yep. You've already spoken, yep. Okay. That's fine. Sure. I got you. Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Doris Watts Anthony and I actually live in Atlanta, Georgia. And I fly here every month, staying two and three weeks at a time to care for my mom. And we sit out on the porch and her community that we just spoke about a few moments ago. Well, what I want to express to you is I grew up in Anarunta County. I went to Arnold Elementary School. I went to graduate from Savannah Park High School. I rave about Anarunta County. I love Anarunta County. I heard a lot of bad things about Anarunta County. And I thought, I don't remember that for Anarunta County. And they say, yes, da-da-da-da-da. They lost some lawsuits. They did this and that. Said, really? Anarunta County? But I love Anarunta County. So what I'm saying to you, this board, which I appreciate the opportunity to speak is, and I've heard other people mention it too, we need a better process. We need more transparency. There was no signage for the community of Shirleyville to even know anything. And then when we get here, there's no information on the paperwork. And as an African-American, we feel like, did they do it intentionally? Or was it an oversight? We want to believe it's an oversight. We want to believe we've gone past when my great-great-grandfather had to put an X because he couldn't read and write and they stole his land. We want to go past that. We want to believe more than that. But a little bit back in our minds, we're thinking, are they really for us or not? And so I was really appreciative for Councilwoman Amanda Felder because she has been there. I've called her on several occasions about other things, other than this. And I'm a Democrat, African-American woman Democrat. And she's a Republican. And she came through for me. And when I got here tonight and I saw this here-
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
My name is Doug Schaefer. I'm here regarding Amanda's, Fiedler's Amendment Number 21. We requested this amendment just so that the zoning could support the current use of the property and the use that it's been since the 50s, as Mr. Listman testified to earlier. So we're just trying to make it so that the zoning actually is in agreement with what the use has been since its, since its beginning. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is William Stansbury. I have property on 1454. Used to be two lots there, 1454 and 1456. And my grandmother, I'm Fayh's cousin, my grandmother also left me property. I think we should still stick with R1 because I'm looking forward to having my kids separate. You could put two, a house, one house on each acre. And we have two-acre lots. I want to try to build them a house there. I can remember further up the road where beyond Mr. Simeon, it was like five or six families up there. And I agree with the single-family homes. It's not going to be townhouses. I hope they do go and put one house on one acre. I remember the Griffins and the Daze and Cars and Millers. It was all a bunch of houses, but all the older people passed away. Nobody else built houses up there. And when I was living up there, when I was younger, I used to catch people going up and dumping because nobody was living up there. But now since, if they go back to putting some single-family homes back up there, you know, you don't have to worry about people going dumping and stuff like that no more. You know? I just wish they would keep it, they changed back, like she said, back in 89 because it was R1 and then now they say it's- it's, um, my bad, what you call it? RL, oh yeah, RLD. Now they try to make it rural property. No, we need to at least keep one acre per house, I mean, one house per acre, you know? Come on. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Maureen Carr York, President of the Greater Savannah Park Council, and I'm here with an update. On Tuesday evening, June 11th, Ms. Fiedler appeared at our regular scheduled delegates' meeting and to a pretty much full house, explained the current status of certain changes that were proposed in the pending bill. And the amendments that we hope will be forthcoming are not yet on the record, so I can't address them by number. But I hope that you'll keep in mind the folks who were here tonight. You heard from Mary Vogel saying she might have got her Cs and Rs mixed up, but she and Tracy Nicole, both are two of the many, many residents of the area that is of concern to us between Robinson Road and Pasadena Road, East West Boulevard. And there's one long block in particular where there is an individual who not long ago purchased a property and is seeking commercial zoning. That would be a disaster for a number of these residents of the area because immediately another series of properties started looking at commercial zoning and talking about it. And we have fought to maintain the residential nature of that portion of Ritchie Highway throughout these many decades. We did notice that while there's a proposal to take our thriving commercial district and potentially add more residences to it, we're at the same time taking a nice residential area and proposing to convert it to commercial. We hope that you will heed what's been mentioned tonight. I'll ask the folks to stand up who came tonight. We'll see you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
I'm Anna. All right. My name is Marty Reese. I'm the current owner of Corwell Store on Early Heights Road. I was also born in December of 57, so I know the Listman family very well. I played on that location. I had a horse right next to that location at the ranger station. And it's always been used as a commercial property, what, what they want to have done with the zoning to make it C1. Ever since I was a kid, it was always a parking lot. You'd go in the store, buy your food. The man would carry it across, put it in your car. It was just a, like an old hometown place, and it's been that way forever. And I was really upset when they moved the big trailers out of there because we used to buy hay and feed out of them, and it was just like something was lost. So I'm all for them recreating this area because they've done a great job so far cleaning it up and making things happen for that bike trail that's there. So keep up the good work. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Harvey Riley. I live at 1405 Shotown Road. I'm considered one of the new neighbors. We moved in, actually bought the property November of 2003. So I'm not opposed to my neighbors requesting changes, just like they have the right to oppose me. But I've listened, and two of the neighbors who came up in support of the rezoning do not live on the street anymore. They live in different areas. One house has been sitting vacant for years, was recently for sale for excess of $1 million, but did not sell. So I am opposed to any change to R1 or R5 zoning. I prefer to keep it the way that it is. So I support that in One Our Street, Shotown, and also Shirleyville.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed.
My name is Tashima Cook, and I'm a legacy resident at Shirleyville Road. I no longer live there. My aunt lives there. She's here as well. I frequent that road because it is where I grew up and where my great-grandmother, Virginia Cook, bought property and built the house that still stands there with her family. They built it with, you know, their own hands, and it's a story for many of the families, most of the families on Shirleyville Road. As we mentioned last time, Shirleyville is a historically black community. And as I stand here, I am so conflicted and charged in this room because, as I listen to, to people speak, in particular, the black members of this community, of this county who are here in this room, there is a deep history of land ownership, of black land ownership, of legacy, and of the desire to create generational wealth and actions toward it. As far as the property on Shirleyville Road, I'm not sure where I stand as far as the amendment right now, Amendment 12. I want to thank Amanda Fiedler for her awareness of our community and for coming out to our community to say like, wow, if this property is developed, that could absolutely kill this community. And for, yeah, just standing for us in that way. I do want to note the, as far as myself as a member of that community, how complex this is, and the wider, you know, community, how complex this is because this property is a forested area. It is part of Anarona County's Greenway or their designated green spaces as far as the green infrastructure master plan that has been adopted by you all, I believe, in 2022. It's mostly forested. I believe there's under an acre of this property that is currently developed. To rezone this property would be, if it were ever to be purchased and developed, would be to break down that infrastructure of the Greenway. I stand with the young girl who came up here earlier that says she likes the forest, and she wants to maintain that. I also stand for the ability of black legacy residents to be able to use their land in the ways that they desire to support the equity in Anarona County for green spaces as well as for their homes.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Norman Aberwais, Sr. I live at 1349 Shirleyville. That was my sister and my mother up here that you've seen. I lived there for 70 years, and it deserves. I'm an honorable discharge, and I'd like to thank Shotown for recognizing us. I really appreciate it. We're R1. You've never been to my neighborhood. The police officer right there, he probably never been there unless we call him, and we don't call them. There have never been no killing or no stealing in that neighborhood. It's a peaceful place. You take time and just ride up there. If you see anybody outside cutting grass, you will get a nice wave. If you break down, we will help you out. It's a nice, peaceful place, and we don't want it destroyed by a whole bunch of houses coming up there. It's a water plant. It's like a green area. There's vegetation. Certain areas you shouldn't build around. But they'll come and put up all these houses up there. It's R1 now. One house, you can get two houses up there for five acres, you know, five acres. And we're just living in peace, and that's the way we like to have it. And like I said, we've been there seven years, and the only time a police come up there, we have somebody sticking the emeralds, come to police come with the emeralds. Other than that, we have no problem up there. And thank the panel for listening to what I have to say. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi. I'm Cindy Schaefer. To talk about Early Heights Road, Listman's property. We purchased it a few years ago and trying to rejuvenate it back to the use that it's always had. We have the parking lot. There's a barn, and it's become a family gathering place. There are many families that are supported, their income's supported with yoga, wellness, instructors, outdoor markets. And we love the property and would just like to keep it at the use it is now, which would be C1. And across the street is C1. The rest of the property is C1, President.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes. My name is Mel Sedgwick. I live on 1460 Shotown Road and 1450. I am for R1. The property that was divided, it's always been 1460 and 1450. When it, just recently, we just found out that it was combined. We was not informed. We were still paying taxes on two different properties. And I don't understand why we weren't informed ahead of time and not knowing that I wanted to add on to my house to do daycare. And because of this, it's a holdup because of something that we weren't informed. We've been paying taxes. Nothing has changed. Even the mailing still comes separate with two different addresses of the property. But when we found out that it was joint, we had no idea that it, you know, whoever took upon itself to joint our property. So I am opposed to for R1. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh-huh.
Sorry. My name is Julie Santaboni, and I live at 161 Ferguson Road in Annapolis. Please adopt the PAB's unanimous decision to rezone our property C4 commercial. We live next to a highway interchange. All other parcels on Ferguson Road are zone C4 or are owned by state highway, which is not subject to zoning. We have no residential neighborhood. Instead, we live behind a secure gate, which is necessary to minimize problems we've had with trespassers who illegally came onto our property to dump trash and engage in other illicit behavior or to look for a shortcut to the gun club or to the Bay Bridge. We even had our driveway gate stolen, so we had to install a more secured gate, which has been hit and damaged multiple times by vehicles using our driveway to turn around. We had to beg the county to install no parking signs around our driveway to stop dealership delivery and service vehicles from using our driveway. The dealerships are stretched for space, and while it's an eyesore to the community, the space constraints cause real problems for us. To list other ways, our property is not residential. The location is so unsafe for the school bus to stop that we frequently had a police car parked in our driveway waiting to ticket cars. We've endured middle-of-the-night road construction, the state highway's argument being that to do construction at any other time of day would inconvenience a large number of residents. But we are also county residents. We have had a very large and loud, non-conforming used gun club literally in our backyard. There's a reason why the current zoning code only allows outdoor rifle ranges to operate in C4 by special exception. Noise from an outdoor range is one of two stated reasons why Anarona County wants to build a new indoor firing range for the police department, yet we have a gun range in our backyard. SHAs told us that if, and more likely when, a new Bay Bridge is built, they are going to use the parcels around us for construction staging. These are not normal residential problems. Finally, I've heard a lot of theorizing about why we want rezoning. We are not developers. We do not want a gas station. We just do not find our house to be residential. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Giovanni Santaboni. My address is in Ferguson Road in Annapolis. I'm the husband. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of this council. I'm here to speak, as you may imagine, in favor for the rezoning of the parcel to C4. Now, in doing so, I will point to our submission to the planning advisory board that reviewed, analyzed, debated our submission, to then unanimously voted to support it to C4, and all the reason why they found the C4 designation, which is sensible and recommendable. More briefly, it's the sole residential property on Ferguson Road, the only property on the access of Route 50. There is neither owned, sorry, exit 28, I should specify, there is neither owned by the state of Maryland nor zone commercial. Now, I'll cut straight to actually the issue of environmental impact. The property is approximately 10.7 acres in size, but more than six of these acres are protected under forest conservation easement. It is limited with a very steep slope. Now, that is 60%. That is a massive buffer that protects the area to the east towards the Old Millbottom Road, and therefore is incredibly unlikely that anyone from that area and beyond will ever feel any impact from this zoning change. Now, doing the math, this leaves approximately four acres only available for future development, approximately half of which is already cleared and developed because there's a house, there's a path, there's a clear brush. Therefore, the environmental impact of this zoning change is negligible. Now, finally, I must recognize the uneasiness on some in the community about this, and I understand it. But if any economic growth is to happen, well, at least let's make it a smart growth, one that supports the goal of the GDP 2040, one that generates a benefit for the local economy, which is coupled with a least environmental impact. I'm here to state that this rezoning precisely fulfills this criterion, and I'm just down to thank you for your patience and for listening.
Thank you. This panel is dismissed. Are there additional members of the audience looking to testify? Come forward. We have six seats.
My name is Beverly Jacobson. I'm here representing 1347 Shirleyville Road and born and raised there, 67 years old in August. And this all upsets me dearly because as one of the neighbors, younger neighbors, she said, I don't understand why you're so emotional about this. Because as a little girl, Mr. Horace Maynard, the, they say the place was called Shirleyville. That was his youngest baby, right? So he could read and write. He owned a lot of land. And as a little girl, Mr. Horace refused to sell, refused. So one night, they came and they hung him, and they said he put his X on the bill of sale. Next came College Parkway. After College Parkway, there was a Providence Center. There was a golf course. There was a whole lot of things. So they keep telling us that. Didn't tell us anything about rezoning 1352. Not one letter to one of those 13 homes on Shirleyville Road. All of a sudden, I'm getting emails and phone calls from everywhere, and I'm shaking because I want to cry. Bad. These people are family, blood family, neighborhood family, and we're very close. And we look out for each other. But I don't know who to believe and who not to believe. One minute they're selling, next minute they're not. They want to rezone and put up houses. I'm not against someone building, but when you say you're not selling, I don't see if you're not selling and why you're, we need it rezoned. Because that's why I say to stay with RDL. If you're a little...
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to summarize.
Okay.
Because the buzzer's gone off.
Okay. I'm sorry. My thing is, stay, I've talked to the family members on both ends. They said they're not selling. So why can't it just stay RLD? Then that resolves everybody's problem. Shirleyville remains the same.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Michael Johnson. I'm here in support of Amendment 21 presented by Amanda Fiedler. I'm good friends with Conrad Listman, who has great stories about the property. And I just want to say that I'm in support of the rezoning for the parking lot adjacent to Listman's store.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi. My name's Deborah Brassmussen. I live on Old Jones Station Road. It's not Old Jones Station anymore. It's just Jones. I was here just two weeks ago also, just trying to encourage the council to please take seriously how much you're thinking about upzoning, rezoning, the density of the houses. I have learned a lot. I am still trying to learn how a lot of the terminology and what is going on. I just... I just know, as I said, I've been on the Broadneck, two weeks ago, I've been on the Broadneck Peninsula for 62 years. I live on Old Jones Station Road. There were about a dozen homes on there. I understand what Shirleyville is saying. There are now about 55 homes on there. Affordable housing? Um, I'm hoping I can remain in my home because of the tax increases and that type of situation of housing that's different than mine, that's been allowed to be built on that road. I understand, um, family, my father, I bought the home from my father. I bought it, he did not give it to me, uh, 30-some years ago. I also want to point out, just as far as the density increase of cutting down the trees of our environment, that I have heard in this state for so many years about protecting our shorelines and our environment, our habitat. I have seen so much difference by just allowing the increase of housing development and commercial building. I think each person here does have a right to be listened to, just please do consider the families' diversity in housing. Shirleyville, um, I'm not a diversity family anymore on Jones Station Road. So I understand where they're coming from.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Madam Chairwoman, members of the council, thank you for your time. My name is Ben Wexler. I am here in two capacities today. I'm here as a homeowner in Arnold, and as also as the representative for Mr. and Mrs. Santaboni, who live at 161 Ferguson Road. And here today to speak in favor of the request for C4 zoning that we have made, made the request through the portal. As you've heard from a number of people today, this is a parcel that was created when the Route 50 signal was removed at the intersection with Baydale, and it was basically an orphaned parcel on Ferguson Road that happens to, that kept the same zoning that it had before, it's RLD. Since then, this property is, is the sole developed residential property on Ferguson Road, it's next to a state highway administration parcel that's likely to be a staging area, it's next to a number of C4 car dealerships. It abuts a expanding and very active gun range. It is not a good place for residential zoning, it's not a good place for residents, and you've heard from Mr. and Mrs. Santaboni, um, tonight about that. It is, from a planning perspective, a fantastic candidate for C4 highway commercial zoning. It sits on an interchange with a federal highway, and it has been sitting there and developed, yes, with a single-family home, but with encroaching increasingly intense commercial uses all around it. It is a property that is perfectly suited for C4 highway commercial, and our request to the council is please consider this, um, in this comprehensive zoning process. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Higgins?
Well, Higgins, Pasadena, Maryland. I sat here tonight, and I listened a lot about Woodford Road. We have a C1 parcel, five acres, up near Woodford Mountain. And while we operate a business on that, we still file for non-conforming, because we don't totally conform. We started filing that non-conforming in 1970, when zoning came out. So it's just as much tradition to file it as it is to go through this process to try and get it, to meet the process. The issue is, we don't have any issues. We know how to work with our neighbors. And I think, um, when they put Route 100 in, they really tore up that section of Pasadena. They chopped Long Hill Road in half, they created dead ends, they made 648 loop down by the park, and it's, it's really become a hodgepodge. You can't, don't, don't expect to put this together like a monopoly board. You're not going to be able to do it. And, and the reason I say that is, I heard some of our neighbors just to the south talk a little bit about residential and commercial, yet right across the street from us, we had a large residential parcel that we've, I've noticed there's signs that have been posted that there's hearings and it's wanting to go to C1. Now, I haven't seen that yet, I'm only anticipating somewhere in the process this comes out, but I'm going to tell you, that's the right move for just a half a mile up the road from my neighbors, okay? It fits well, it's a lot of traffic. You can't generate much more unless you go in there with, if you go in there with residential, it'll be a nightmare. So if you hear about it, please don't blend in with everything else that was going on. And, and it's really kind of a unique area, if you haven't lived, I've, I heard the Listmans talk about their parking lot, you know, there's a lot of little parcels down there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
My name is Thurston Brooks, I'm from 1367 Shirleyville Road, I've been there for 30 years. And this rezoning has really placed our neighborhoods in a conundrum. On one hand, you have passing on family wealth. The ability to give to your children a piece of land, an acre, a quarter acre, to build on. With this rezoning, that really kills that. I understand where the people from Shot Town are coming from. Okay? Also, on Shirleyville, we have 11 or 12 acres that sits there. It was passed on to their family, and how that's going to break up, we don't know. If it goes to a developer, we're in trouble. Okay? Plain and simple, we're wiped out. And I really do want to pass on a little bit of the wealth that my parents couldn't pass on to me. I've been blessed, and so have a lot of my neighbors, to have just a little bit more than what our parents had. And being able to pass that on to the next generation, or to give an acre or a quarter acre to our children, that would be a blessing. And that would also help Anarundel County in keeping affordable housing to our children, our families. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. At this time, are there folks in the audience still wanting to testify? Come on down? Yep. We have six seats. We do have two seats, so this is going to be our last call, since we don't have all six seats. This is going to be the last call for this public hearing on Bills 27, 24, and 28, 24 tonight. All right. For, for folks, eight minutes. You have the floor.
My name is Deborah Bell. I'm here in support of the property known as Listman's. It has been used as a commercial property since its inception. You heard Mr. Listman and Mr. Reese both speak as the uses of this property when they were children, storefront, hay and supply trailers. The Shafers are breathing life back into this property and bringing neighbors together and building a positive community environment. Over 100 names are on a petition to support this community change. This is wanted and rejuvenates the area, so I would like to strongly support it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi. Lori Edwards.
102 Sandgate Court in Brittingham, within walking dismounts of the Listman property, and just wanted to say that I'm very happy with the revitalization of that area, and, um, helped get some of the over 100 signatures to support it, which was very easy to do. All the surrounding neighbors are very happy with what's happening, and just want to make sure that they have the zoning to continue to maintain this property and revitalize the area. Thanks. Oh, one more thing, sorry. I also, as a Brittingham resident, I'm in favor, I support the position the Greater Saverta Park Council is taking on the areas on Ehrlich Heights, Route 2. And, on Route 2, on Ritchie Highway. Thanks.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello, my name is Dr. Randy Ral, I live in Mulberry Hill Road, and this journey started a few weeks ago, and we discovered something very interesting. On the north-south side of Mulberry Hill Road, which is located near the Naval Academy Golf Course, all the, it was a yellow map, if you can imagine, a yellow, a map with yellow, and it was all the way on the, on the south side, all the houses on the south side were R2. Our neighborhood's been there for 150 years, like many in the communities you're here. And on the north side, they were all gray. So when it looked all gray, it meant R1. So why is it on R2, R1? And why is it that we don't have a similar opportunity? What you're hearing today from many of these communities is this desire to pass on. But more important, equally important, is there's not any other land elsewhere in the county that they can afford to live. So I'm just here one more time, and since I've came here with me, by myself, and now we have 15 people, individuals in our neighborhood, who have signs up, ready for your vote. So I hope that you would consider the importance, decision that you have to make regarding the legacy that we have built over 150 years. Please take that in consideration.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Hi, Gus Kurtz, Pasadena, Maryland, and I'm here in support of Amendment Number 20, which is, everybody would refer to it as the parking lot. Um, we've heard about parking lots, this is the, not the parking lot at Listman's, this is the parking lot at Kurtz's Beach. And I don't have Mr. Listman beat, I think his grandfather started that in 1928, but we're close. My grandfather started Kurtz's Beach in 1933. So we're almost 92 years in, and we hope to be there 100, and maybe with my children, and maybe their children, maybe another 100. Um, I do have a handout that I'd like for you to look at. It's just a cute picture from 1942, showing the parking lot full of cars, and it's pretty unique with the cars, the type of cars that were in the parking lot. So I just support that amendment to change our non-conforming use of, of property that's been used for 92 years as a parking lot. And I would also say that this comprehensive rezoning, as you heard, as you heard today, tonight, and you've heard many other nights, is really, really tough. And it's very, very important decisions, and they're hard decisions. And now, there's always two sides to the story, and it doesn't, it's not easy to make decisions. So good luck on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to need it. Sir?
Good evening, and, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Uh, my name is Rodney Parker, Sr. Live on Broadneck Road. My son spoke earlier in reference to our property, which is RLD, and we are looking to change it to R2, because we have two sons. Who would like to come home? And we want to be able to afford that to them. The property that we live on has been in my wife's family. She was born and raised on that property. Her mother and father passed it on to her, and we would like to pass it on to another generation, but we can't do that without your help. So we are here to petition you, just like the room is thinned out a bit, because the hour is getting late. But everybody here has the same situation. We hope that you would grant our request, uh, and the request of so many other people here. And we're talking about legacy. We're talking about being able to pass on something, generational wealth, to your children. We give our children many things, but we can give them the gift of prosperity and generational wealth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This panel is dismissed. At this time, the joint public hearing on Bills 27-24 as amended and 28-24 as amended is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of Bills 27, 28 as amended, and 28, oh my gosh, 27, 24, and 28, 24 as amended. Thank you. Bill Number 27, 24, Inordinance Concerning General Development Plan, Region 4 Plan. Bill Number 28, 24, Inordinance Concerning Comprehensive Zoning, Region 4. Okay. I believe, uh, everyone in the chambers is ready to get down to these amendments, correct? Do we have any comments from the administration or my colleagues before we start amendments? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 12 to Bill 27, 24.
Amendment Number 12, this amendment changes the planned land use for property known as 1352 Shirleyville Road, Arnold, from residential low-density to rural.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment does exactly what it says it does, after hearing from the community overwhelmingly about the desire to keep RLD for this property on Shirleyville Road. Um, and I will do my very best to increase communication to you all, and I said it before, please sign up for my newsletter, please follow me on social media, and, um, just reach out if you ever have any questions on anything, I'm always happy to answer them. But with that, I would move the amendment forward.
Is there a second? The administration would like to respond to Amendment Number 12 to Bill 27, 24.
Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We had originally supported this request for rezoning. The property's approximately 11 acres in size. We do have some narrative in the plan that talks about affordable housing. I think we probably should have said here simply an increase in housing supply. We obviously have heard all the testimony this evening, and we don't oppose the amendments that Ms. Fiedler's put forward.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I wanted to say a few, just take a moment to just discuss, um, how I'm voting tonight. Uh, not necessarily with this, just this bill, but just in general. It's a very moving testimony from, you know, both sides of the issue. And I think what has struck me the most is hearing from, from these two sides, and there is certainly merit to both sides of it. You know, I come from a family where, you know, we didn't, we didn't have any legacy. Like, my mother couldn't give me anything to pass down. I love her, don't get me wrong, uh, but she was poor and five kids by the, before she turned 20, and she really had nothing to give us. And so when I hear the testimony about legacy and, um, and generational opportunities for you, man, that speaks to me. It really, really, really speaks to me. Um, and the, and the reason I thought it was important to see, uh, pass on these comments is because what has grounded me over the last, you know, pretty much 26, 27 years of my adult life, certainly, uh, is, is structure. That's, you know, I didn't, I didn't get the generational wealth, and I didn't get the, the legacy, but I got structure, mainly from the military, because I had no choice, or they were going to put a, a boot up my butt, uh, and, and I didn't want that. But over this comprehensive zoning process, structure and consistency has guided how I voted, uh, when it comes to these, these amendments. Uh, so for those that unfortunately may feel like they, their voice wasn't heard during this process, trust me, it was. But I, I, for me, I think it's important for me to be consistent in how I've applied my logic, uh, over the last several months that we've been doing this. Um, you know, we, we, each of us are elected to our councilmatic districts, and we have a duty and a responsibility to, uh, respond to those, those constituents who have elected us. And so I take, I take, I, I really lean on that, uh, which is why it's important that, uh, you know, I'm encouraged that you are reached out to your council member, uh, because I, I hope they have your overarching district heart, um, at, at large, you know, in, in their best interest. And so, um, no matter how I vote, I just want you to know, uh, that I heard each and every single one of you, uh, and that, that legacy piece really, really touched me, and I hope there is a way for us to remediate and/or find some solution to your issues, especially for the two families that are kind of, kind of split to some extent. But- But I felt it was important for me to tell you from my heart where I was in this process. So, thank you.
Ms. Pampa, we have this amendment before us. We do know, though, from the region planning, that the property owner at 1352 Shirleyvale didn't, did not request the zoning change, or did they?
They did request.
Oh, they did?
Ms. Pickard, yes.
Okay, I was, I'm confused by that. Okay. I wanted to ask, I wanted to take just a minute to get some feedback from the Office of Planning and Zoning regarding when we do, we've heard some of the history of several properties tonight, which is very interesting. My community, or areas in my community have gone through some, and suffered some negative impacts of zoning decades ago, right? That we're having to deal with now as property changes hands. But I, when, when property is, the zoning changes, it does not necessarily throw out the rest of the zoning code and all of our environmental regulations or things, correct? It's not like this automatic, all of a sudden, poof, and there's a skyscraper.
Christina Pampa, Office of Planning and Zoning. That's correct. I mean, Article 17 still has our environmental, our environmental code and restrictions in it, which people have to meet, which is actually the comment I made to the, to the gentleman who referenced my comments in testimony. Because he asked me, well, what are you gonna do about stormwater? And I said, stormwater is addressed during the development review process, which it is. I mean, certain things are addressed at certain times in the process. Like, we don't design stormwater management as part of comprehensive zoning. If the property were to develop in the future, they would have to address our stormwater requirements. If there are wetlands on a property, they will have to deal with delineating them. If they want to impact them, they will need to get a permit from the state. So it's a long process, and here in Anarundel County, I mean, we represent the planning division, and we deal with a portion of things.
Correct. I mean, as, sitting on the council for the last six years, we've, we have intensified our environmental regulations tremendously, to the point where a home that is built today has many, many more environmental regulations than one that was built 50 and 60 years ago. So I just, there's some, I just wanted to bring that up for folks listening, for some of the rationale that you'll see different council members make regarding different amendments. Tonight, we didn't, for Shirleyvale Road, we certainly heard the community loud and clear about what they're looking for in their community. It is 11 acres, and I don't, we did not hear from the property owner tonight as to what the intent was. And that's unfortunate, to be quite honest, because if there is an intent to pass down property as the neighbors across the street have over the years, we don't know that tonight sitting here. So it's a very hard decision, as someone told us we needed good luck tonight. So my vote tonight might look a little, might look a little interesting, but there's a rationale behind it. Do we have any other comments on Amendment Number 12? Ms. Radvian?
Thank you. Since we're taking the time to talk, you know, sort of big-picture philosophy of land use, I thought I would just take a minute to sort of explain where my votes are gonna come from tonight. When people ask me what I do on the county council, I tell them a lot of it has to do with land. And I often say that the big, the big two pieces that are in conflict that we're constantly trying to balance are taking care of our environment and taking care of our people. And one of the things that is in crisis is the need for affordable housing. Tonight made me realize that there's actually a third piece that I don't describe in this equation, and this is the building of generational wealth, particularly by African-American communities who have had the economy and the laws and the system and so many pieces of our society rigged against them for a very, very long time. And we have an opportunity to do something about it here through zoning, of all things. So just know that whatever vote you get from me tonight, I am very seriously considering all three of those things because I think they're, they're all very important. So I'll just stop rambling on because we have stuff to do.
Are we ready to vote on Amendment Number 12? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 12.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 12 to Bill 27, 24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13 to Bill 28, 24.
Amendment Number 13. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 1352 Shirleyville Road, Arnold, from R1 residential to RLD residential low density.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that this was the companion to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
The administration?
In the interest of time, we have the same comments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Radvian? Oh. That's okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 13.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Radvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 13 to Bill 28, 24 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 13 to Bill 27, 24.
Amendment Number 13. This amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as 1401, 1403, 1405, 1440, 1450, 1454, and 1460, Shot Town Road, Annapolis, from residential low, medium density to rural. 1441, Shot Town Road, Annapolis, from residential low density and residential low, medium density to rural, parks and open space, and residential low, medium density. 1462, Shot Town Road, Annapolis, from residential low, medium density and residential low density to residential low, medium density, parks and open space, and rural. 1475, Shot Town Road, Annapolis, from low, medium density residential to low, medium density residential and parks and open space, and no number, Shot Town Road, Annapolis, from low density residential to rural and parks and open space.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to do my very best to summarize and describe this amendment. This is where it gets a little tricky and complicated and emotional because I'm looking at the zoning map right now, and there is an RLD, vastly RLD area in the Arnold vicinity. At the very top of this RLD area is Shirleyville, which we just passed the amendment to retain RLD. If you go down into this RLD area on the map, and I know my colleagues are looking at paper maps right now, I'm looking at the digital map, there are all of the applications for, I'm sorry, all of the change numbers for Shot Town Road. If you remove the folks who have requested to retain their RLD because they did not file an application, it cuts the proposed R1 zoning changes in half with R1 to one side, R1 to the other side, and then right down the center retains RLD. This, and I know we're going to talk about it at a future meeting, the difference between R1 and R2 in another area of the district, but the difference between RLD from a land use perspective, that's low-density rural. When you're talking about R1 and R2, that's low-density suburban, planned land use definitions or descriptions. So there's concern about spot zoning, quite frankly, when you take out the four applicants, I'm sorry, four property owners who did not apply. So that is why this amendment retains the parcels as they are, including the environmental split zones. And motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 13?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So from the testimony that I heard tonight, I definitely heard split testimony. I heard testimony on both sides, people who want to revert back to the residential low-density zoning and people who would prefer to have the R1 zoning or other combinations, including R5. So just to talk a little bit about what happened here, the owners of several properties in the Shot Town Road area submitted zoning change requests. One property, 1462, submitted their application earlier in the process requesting R1 or R5 zoning. The Stakeholder Advisory Committee was not supportive of the request, but OPZ and the PAB recommended splitting 1462 Shot Town Road between R1 and R5 zoning as it was bifurcated by Shot Town Road. Several other property owners in the area submitted zoning change requests to the Planning Advisory Board to change the zoning from RLD to R1 or R5, and the PAB was supportive of this request and recommended R1 zoning for a number of properties. After the Planning Advisory Board, OPZ researched the historical zoning of this area and found that in 1988, comprehensive zoning map that was submitted to the county council showed much of the land south of College Parkway that was not already developed at a higher density, it was recommended to change to RLD zoning. There were council amendments that were made during that zoning process to change large areas from RLD to R1 or R2, but these properties on Shot Town Road were not amended, so they became RLD at that time. This area is within the Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area and has been within the county's Public Sear Service envelope since 1969, meaning that at some point in the future, when capacity is available, this area would be served by public sewer. The adopted Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area and areas designated for public sewer are consistent with R1 and higher-density zoning, while RA and RLD zoning are consistent with rural and agricultural development policy area and areas that are not planned to be served by public sewer in the future. Without conducting additional research and outreach, OPZ was not prepared to recommend all of this area to R1, but in an, in an effort to make a comprehensive zoning recommendation that was consistent with adopted county policies for the property owners who requested a change during the process, OPZ recommended including neighboring parcels in the change to create a contiguous area of R1 comprised of 11 properties. OPZ opposes the amendment reverting the zoning to that which currently exists.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, sorry. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So going back to contiguous, if the council, at the very least, removes those properties that did not apply for a change in zoning, that's 1405, 1441, 1440, and 1454, take those out, we no longer have a contiguous change in zoning to R1.
I believe that's correct, Ms. Fiedler. So I, we've heard very powerful testimony tonight about, from property owners on Shot Town Road, and I don't know how you can't, you know, really be affected by the thought of being able to leave property to families. We're talking about R1 here. We're not, we're not talking about R22. I can't support this amendment.
Understood.
I think we all have, I'm not gonna give everybody the history lesson on land use, not just in Anarundel County, but in, in the country and across the country, and people should be able to use their property the way they want to. I would have voted the same way on the previous amendment, but we didn't have that land owner here from Shirleyvale Road to speak for themselves, and so I didn't feel as compelled as I am sitting here with folks here tonight. So I'm just letting everybody know that's my vote. Mr. Smith, do you have something to say?
Yeah, just for a second. Is the contiguous piece the main concern that you have with, with that parcel?
Yes, but also the feedback from the neighboring residents. This is a very narrow road and windy road. It, of course, compelling testimony this evening. I scooted over to my colleague and said, if this amendment passes this evening, I'd like to look at some alternatives in the code to allow for some development for familial passage. But that was...
Yeah, and the reason I asked was like, and if there, this is not, that's fine, too. Could the, could the amendment be crafted in a way where those, those property owners that did not want their stuff to change stayed the same in the rest around? Obviously, you wanted to go, remove the R5 piece from this, it looks like, but, but just to change the ones to R1 to allow that to, for those residents? If not, I just wanted to pose a question that time.
No, and that's something that I did, Madam Chair, may I respond?
You may.
That was something that I did look at, and in having another conversation on another area of District 5, what you're talking about RA and RLD, those are kind of lumped together, similar in their land use description versus R1 and R2 that are lumped together in their land use description. So it is more, there's less likely a chance of spot zoning challenges when you have RA and RLD together or R1 and R2. But to have RLD and R1, their underlying planned land use is different. So I, if I'm speaking correctly, Ms. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, I know we've gone back and forth on this, there's more potential for a challenge in spot zoning when you don't have continuity among the land use designations.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. Yes, that, that is correct. One of the things that a court would look at if there was a spot zoning challenge was whether it was consistent with the underlying planned land use classification. And you're correct that some of those are the same, and some of those are, are different depending on the zoning.
Thank you.
When we talk about spot zoning, though, we're, these amendments all also then change the planned land use. That's why we're doing them in tandem, so that we are consistent. And I would just, you know, refer to my colleagues, but this is the time to rezone people's properties. They're not going to have this opportunity for another 20 years, potentially.
Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney. That, that's correct. Well, that's one of the reasons that we're doing these tandem amendments, is to try to keep that consistency in making those changes in both of the, the region plan and the zoning.
So I think when people refer, or when we reference the need for affordable housing, and we're talking about upzoning something to R1, we all know that one dwelling per acre is not necessarily going to give you that affordable house for someone living at 60% average median income, but it is going to be affordable for someone who already owns their own land and can't build on it. They're going to be able to build a dwelling where they couldn't right now. So that in itself becomes an, an aspect of affordability and attainability for housing in Anarundel County. So we can be flip and, and go all the way to subsidized housing, but obviously, when we're talking about trying to make changes, impactful changes to the zoning code, we have to look at affordability and attainability in every aspect of the term, not just when we talk about, you know, a subsidized housing product. Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify because this, this question has come up before about spot zoning. Spot zoning is not, well, Ms. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong. Spot zoning can... Spot zoning is not, well, Ms. Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, spot zoning can also take place during comprehensive rezoning if there's not contiguous or similar land use designations running together. It's not being outside or inside comprehensive rezoning. This is just for educational purposes and for the public.
Yes, Kelly County Supervising County Attorney. Spot zoning can occur during the comprehensive zoning process, although most of the time when it's, when something is challenged, it's spot zoning is usually like a text amendment to the zoning law that, you know, allows a use, you know, on a property that wouldn't otherwise be allowed, like those are the types of things that also could be challenged as spot zoning. But in the comprehensive zoning context, and we did talk about this a little bit before, and we've analyzed, I've looked at this, you know, in the context of comprehensive rezoning, it can, something can be challenged as spot zoning. It's sometimes less likely to be, for the challenge to be upheld by the court, because when you're doing it comprehensively, then there, there's a presumption there that you have done it correctly and that it is appropriate, but there's always that, it can always be challenged as that. So, I can't ever say that it is or is not spot zoning when you're looking at it as comprehensive rezoning, but it's less likely that it would, that it would be subject to challenge when you're, when it's through the comprehensive zoning process. That makes sense?
It does, thank you.
Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question about these properties generally, are any of them big enough even if they did have the R1 zoning to be able to develop? Do they have the requisite area for setbacks? Would they be able to be developed? Are they big enough?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We haven't done a detailed analysis of that. Some of these properties are smaller, some of them are larger. There are a lot of factors that come into whether or not you can subdivide, for instance, if these are R1 at R1 density. There is no public sewer in this area, so you have to get a percolation test. You're correct, you have to meet setbacks. We haven't done that level of analysis.
May I follow up?
You may.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess the only thing I'm thinking about is, even if these were to go R1, I'm not sure how much development potential there is for any of these properties unless you were able to merge them and kind of build a larger parcel and see what you could do with that, so, because I mean, looking at some of these, they're very, oddly is the word I would use, shaped parcels, some of them, the way they sort of flag out to get to the road or different rights of way. So, I just, I would be very interested if you had anything you could add to that. I don't know if, Ms. Kenny, do you know anything about the development potential on these?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, no, I couldn't speak to that either. I mean, when something comes in for development, you have to look at what, you know, the floodplains, the environmental features, and, you know, determine what area of that lot is buildable, so you don't really know that until someone comes in with an application.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, Mr. Ketterling just checked on our GIS and picked out one of the smaller parcels, and it is two acres, so you have some, you know, I think most of the parcels in here are going to be over two acres.
Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To also tag on to your question, Mr. Volkey, the one property that is going back to a split zone with R5 and open space, I believe, there is a stream that runs through the portion that is going back to open space. Just wanted to note that for the record.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 13 to bill 2724.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter? Mr. Smith? Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, amendment number 13 to bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment, amendment number 14 to bill 2824.
Amendment number 14, this amendment changes the zoning of properties known as 1401, 1403, 1405, 1440, 1450, 1454, and 1460 Shawtown Road Annapolis from R1 residential to RLD residential low-density. 1441 Shawtown Road Annapolis from R1 residential to a split of RLD residential low-density, OS open space, and R5 residential. 1462 Shawtown Road Annapolis from R1 residential and R5 residential to a split of RLD residential low-density, RS opens, excuse me, OS open space and R5 residential. 1475 Shawtown Road Annapolis from R5 residential to a split of R5 residential and OS open space, and no number Shawtown Road Annapolis from R1 residential to a split of RLD residential low-density and OS open space.
Ms. Feedler?
This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment, motion to adopt.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning, we have the same comments that we did for the previous amendment.
Is there any further discussion on amendment number 14 to bill 2824? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 14.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Nay.
And Ms. Pickard?
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative, amendment number 14 to bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 14 to bill 2724.
Amendment number 14, this amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as 8601 Veterans Highway Millersville from commercial to conservation.
Ms. Feedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment comes from interest from the adjoining community of Shipley's Choice. There is a private agreement, which I know the county does not recognize, to protect this area on the commercial property, and they have requested that open space remain in place, and with that, motion to adopt.
The administration?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, during Plan 2040, the planned land use for this property was changed, and as Ms. Feedler referenced, there are private covenants, and essentially, the planned land use that got adopted for the property did not reflect the private covenants, but the current zoning does reflect, the existing zoning for this property does reflect those covenants, and Ms. Feedler is seeking to honor those covenants and pretty much go back to that mapping. So, I mean, I understand what she's doing, and we don't offer any opposition.
This is the, this is the corner of Veterans and Benfield.
Yes, on the back portion of the physician building, medical building.
Oh, on the other side.
Mm-hmm.
I got you.
Yeah, and Madam Chair?
Sure.
I, I have come to understand, it's taken a few weeks, maybe a few months, the desire for planning and zoning to make consistency changes because of the underlying environmental features that will trigger changes in the development process or changes in approval during the development process, and for the most part, I am letting a lot of those just go, so I appreciate, I know that this is, the colors, the lines, and all of that, I appreciate your willingness to work with me on this one, considering the background on the property.
Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 14 to bill 2724.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number 14 to bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 15 to bill 2824 as amended.
Amendment number 15, this amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 8601 Veterans Highway Millersville from C to Commercial Office to OS open space.
Ms. Feedler?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the one previously passed, motion to adopt.
The administration? Is that a ditto?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on amendment number 15? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 15 to bill 2824.
Ms. Feedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, amendment number 15 to bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 15 to bill 2724.
Amendment number 15, this amendment changes the planned land use for properties known as 433 through 451 and 457 through 477 Broadneck Road, 1406 through 1434, 1439 through 1447, and 1459 Middletown Road and 221 Baydale Drive Annapolis from residential low-density to rural.
Ms. Feedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This area of Broadneck Road had two owner applications originally, and then all of the other properties in this area were recommended for a zoning change by county staff. I had prepared an amendment after putting this out for feedback to the public in, on both social media, just as I did with Shirleyville and in my newsletter, and had overwhelming feedback in opposition to any increases in zoning, residential zoning. With that in mind, I did put a request for an amendment to retain not only the zoning change for the two properties, which are separated by three properties, but to also retain existing zoning for all of the Office of Planning and Zoning recommended changes, which at that time included 473 Broadneck Road. 473 Broadneck Road, we had testimony here this evening, that was an application that came in after my request to put amendments together. That property request does differ from all of the others in the area requesting R2, whereas these are RLD to R1. Motion to adopt.
Would the administration like to weigh in?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So, Ms. Feedler is correct, we had a couple of owner applications. This was similar to Shawtown Road in that after the Planning Advisory Board and around the time of the Planning Advisory Board, we did additional research on this area, and we found that the R1 zoning is consistent with the existing development pattern and the water and sewer master plan and adopted Plan 2040 policies, and of the 16 properties that are recommended to change to R1, 12 of the properties are less than two acres, consistent with the low-density residential planned land use and R1 zoning. And again, similar to Shawtown, the area is within the Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area and has been within the county's Public Sewer Service envelope since 1969, meaning that at some point in the future, when capacity is available, the area would be served by public sewer. The adopted Neighborhood Preservation Development Policy Area and areas designated for public sewer are consistent with R1 and higher-density zoning, while RA and RLD are consistent with Rural and Agricultural Development Policy Area and areas that are not planned to be served by public sewer in the future. Again, in an effort to make a change comprehensive, OPZ recommended including neighboring parcels to create a contiguous area of R1. I don't believe, with the exception of 473 Broadneck Road, who we did hear two people testify for tonight, I don't think anybody else testified in support of this amendment, you know, which means potentially we can soften our position on this.
I missed your position. What is your position on this?
I mean, originally, we would, we propose something different than what Ms. Feedler's amendment has, so, do we oppose it? Do we support it? Do we not offer opposition? Those are generally the things I would say up here, and I think we can soften our opposition because we didn't hear from a ton of people saying, "We want to keep this zoned the way OPZ recommended." We didn't really hear support for that this evening in this area.
What I'm looking at on this map, these parcels are already developed, correct? They have residential properties on them?
Many of them, yes.
So, does that change anything if they're going to now be rural, planned land use of rural versus low-density residential?
I believe that Ms. Feedler is reverting the zoning to what already exists.
So, just for, when I was looking at this area, first, understanding, the Broadneck Peninsula is extremely sensitive to any potential development, and it goes back to the daily, really daily struggles we face with traffic and being able to easily access our communities. We are a peninsula, while we're not a true peninsula like Pasadena with one way in and one way out, pretty close to that. When I was looking at this area of the map, there was one property that does not have an application that is 9.4 acres. That immediately gave me a little bit of pause because there is development potential for nine single-family dwellings or 27 adult independent dwellings if that were pursued. So, that was the property that I started with and said, "Okay, the property owner didn't request this," and then I realized that the vast majority of the properties did not have an owner request, and having feedback from the community, that was my decision to move forward with this amendment.
So, any other, Ms. Hummer?
So, I just want to try to clarify, so currently, the zoning on this property, rather than right now, is rural.
On all of the properties?
On all of the properties.
Is RLD.
RLD. Okay. And it was recommended to be moved to?
R1.
R1, and you're wanting to keep it back to what, to the RLD?
Yes, I am going to have a consistent, if a property owner did not request a residential zoning change and they got kind of swept up in a handful of applications, I do support retaining for those that did not apply, and then that leaves the ones that did apply, you know, kind of standing alone as odd, oddly zoned parcels in a sea of different zoned parcels, if that makes sense.
That makes sense. Just trying to clarify, I'm getting, it's getting late.
Ms. Rodvian?
All the zoning letters and numbers are running together.
Yes, agreed.
Thank you. I just need a very, I think, maybe it's just getting late and I'm getting tired. If we pass these amendments, do the folks that testified tonight about 473 Broadneck Road get what they desire?
Madam Chair? So, the background on 473 is 473 Broadneck Road was captured with the dozen-plus properties that were staff recommendations based off of the original two applications. So, when I requested the amendment to retain what is already the zoning for the area, they were included in that amendment. Then, 20, I don't know, whenever we closed the portal, the day that we closed the portal for applications, the application came in for that property to be R2, which was not requested by the properties originally requested or Office of Planning and Zoning's recommendation for the additional properties in the area, so I did pass on that application, because it's an entirely, it was an entirely different zoning request than the two original applicants and what Office of Planning and Zoning had recommended, if that makes sense.
So, is that, that means no?
That does mean no, I'm just trying to get to, sorry, I didn't actually answer with a yes or no, I apologize.
That's okay. I, I, I guess I'm starting to, I mean, I think maybe I've been feeling this all along, but the, I feel like we're, we're putting emphasis... but the, I feel like we're, we're putting emphasis on consistency, and I don't mean you, I mean this whole process, is putting a level of emphasis on consistency that is superseding other important valuable considerations. And I certainly understand consistency to some extent, you know, we, if someone is living in a residential area, they, they don't necessarily, you know, expect to live next to a gun range, for example. But the, the different levels of zoning, I just want to express that frustration. So, thank you.
Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to say, the amendments that I am proposing, all, most of them this evening, were incredibly difficult to work through. And I tend to.
I will admit.
Yeah.
I will admit.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 15 to Bill number 2724.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer. Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number 15 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 16 to Bill 2824.
Amendment number 16. This amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as 409, 433 through 451, and 457 through 477 Broadneck Road, 1406 through 1434, 1439 through 1447, and 1459 Middletown Road and 221 Baydale Drive, Annapolis, from R1 residential to RLD residential low-density.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the amendment previously passed. Motion to adopt.
Administration?
Same comments.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on amendment number 16? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 16 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Nay.
Ms. Pickard.
Nay.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment number 16 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 16 to Bill 2724.
Amendment number 16. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 8240 Waterford Road, Pasadena, from commercial to residential low-density.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. The property owner did not request to go to C4. This was a consistency change recommended by Planning and Zoning. I've heard from the property owner, they want to go back to R1. Move the amendment.
Second.
Administration?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So this is 8240 Waterford Road. Commercial planned land use was adopted for this parcel during Plan 24, 2040 through staff recommendation 32. For consistency with the adopted planned land use in the surrounding community, OPZ recommended C4 for this site. The SAC and PAB agreed with that recommendation, but the owner obviously has talked to Mr. Volkey and has requested the zoning be reverted to R1. We don't offer any objection based on the fact that it is residential use and the property is fairly small in size.
Is there any further discussion on amendment number 16? Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. What are the neighboring, what is the zoning of the neighboring properties?
C4. If you take a look at Exhibit 17, Ms. Rodvian, and you look at the amendment there, you can actually see what the zoning is on all the other properties. That may help you to see what's in the surrounding area.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing my attention to the right place.
Seeing no further comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 16 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 16 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 17 to Bill 2824 as amended.
I apologize to anyone following along. I accidentally deleted it preparing it today, but I do have the description. It is, "This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 8240 Waterford Road, Pasadena, from C4 highway commercial to R1 residential."
Mr. Volkey.
Companion to the prior amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
The administration?
Same comments.
Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 17 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 17 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, I've lost myself on this, sorry. Thank you. These numbers get confusing. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 17 to Bill 2724.
Amendment number 17. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 8163 Sully Road, Pasadena, from residential low-density to residential low-medium density.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Again, this is a staff recommendation from a consistency change. This was not requested by the landowner. It actually takes the landowner's density down. The landowner did not request this, so I'm asking that we go back and keep the same density that existed prior, so we don't take away economic value. Move the amendment.
Second.
The administration like to weigh in on amendment number 17?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Basically, the owner of 8163 Sully Road owns four lots under the same tax account number, all of which are currently split-zoned R1 and R5. Plan 2040 gave three of the lots a planned land use of low-density residential and the remaining lot at 8163 low-medium density residential. During the region plan, staff identified this discrepancy and recommended 8163 have a planned use, a planned land use of low-density residential to be consistent with the remainder of the lots under the tax account number. The SAC and PAB agreed with the staff recommendation. This amendment will change the planned land use back to low-medium density residential and will change the zoning to R5 and R1. Staff prefers this property not be split-zoned, but offers no objections to the amendment.
So any further discussion on amendment number 17? Madam Secretary, please call the roll for amendment number 17 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 17 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 18 to Bill 2824 as amended.
Amendment number 18. This amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 8163 Sully Road, Pasadena, from R1 residential to R5 residential.
Mr. Volkey.
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Companion to the previous amendment. Move the amendment.
Second.
Same comments.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 18 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 18 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 19 to Bill 2824 as amended.
Amendment number 19. This amendment changes the zoning of the properties known as 450 through 596 Ritchie Highway, 502, 504, 513, 536 through 568 Baltimore Annapolis Boulevard, 501 Leland Drive, 50 West McKenzie Road, 2 Robinson Road, and no number, Old Annapolis Boulevard, Severna Park, from MXDC Commercial to C3 General Commercial.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This amendment, this is a lot, these are a lot of properties. I would not try to tell you what you're looking at on the map attached, other than if you are familiar with the Severna Park Marketplace, which has the Kohl's and the Giant, and on the opposite side of the road on Route 2, Park Plaza. It is that entire shopping area and goes north, ending at Clement's Hardware Store, I believe, is the northernmost part. There were four property owners who reached out and opposed the change to mixed-use commercial. They did have some background information. I think one of the owners sent emails to the council that moving to mixed-use commercial could pose some problems for them in the future if they ever needed to do any kind of upgrade to their property. But in talking to Office of Planning and Zoning, mixed-use may be appropriate in the future, but just right now, as far as zoning is concerned, we do have some changes to mixed-use zoning categories, I think, coming in the future. And maybe it would be more appropriate to revisit this area for mixed-use commercial at that time. I'm going to make a motion to adopt, but I also have a follow-up question after that.
Second.
My follow-up question is, I know we do not have an amendment to 2724 because we're not changing that map, but there was a text change that we had discussed. Does that need an amendment to do?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Yes, it does. I apologize, I didn't answer your email today because I have a lot of other things going on.
It's fine.
I think we can come to agreement on that language, and it would be for the July 1 meeting. And I was going to make comments in my own remarks that we would have a companion amendment coming for the region plan.
Perfect.
Page 44.
Perfect. And, Madam Chair, may I follow up?
I just, it has been moved and seconded, right?
It has, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
To explain what, what the amendment will be coming for 2724, saying it now so that maybe you remember it when we bring it forward next time, it just, it amends the language in the Region 4 plans, not the map, and just reflects and acknowledges that there's a difference between the land use on these properties and the zoning, and that there is interest in revisiting this in the future after doing some studies.
Ms. Rodvian.
Thank you. How would we revisit it? I mean, would that be just, are we, are you saying like in our next, you know, in 10 years from now, when we do our next comprehensive rezoning?
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. Because we do look back, we look back at what was done in the previous comprehensive rezoning, and that kind of guides us, I think, forward to see if we are continuing with that goals or if there are any goals that weren't met. And at that time, that language would be picked up.
Thank you. Could I just direct a question to OPZ? Where, and I apologize if you've already really answered this question. Where are you at this, on this amendment?
We haven't given our opinion yet.
Oh. That would be awesome.
This is a good time to do that. Okay, thank you. I need a little prompting. It is definitely past my bedtime. I apologize. So the properties in the Severna Park Marketplace have had a mixed-use planned land use since the small-area plan for this area was adopted. For consistency with the planned land use in Plan 2040, the most recent general development plan, staff recommended mixed-use zoning for these properties. We did discuss this specifically with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee, and there were a couple areas in Region 4 that the Stakeholder Advisory Committee was generally supportive of mixed-use zoning, but because our current mixed-use zoning designations are based on use, and all of them have very large scale, that's not necessarily in keeping with neighborhoods, we heard both from Region 2 and from Region 4 SACs that they thought that our mixed-use zoning should be more scale-oriented and not use-oriented. So with those comments, the SAC did recommend for MXD zoning, and the PAB also supported that recommendation. In discussing this with Ms. Fiedler, we thought, and another piece of information that I need to bring forward is the Office of Planning and Zoning, in conjunction with the Office of Law, has prepared, has prepared legislation to revise the mixed-use zoning districts. I don't know the timing of when that's coming forward. I don't think it's coming as quickly as we thought it might. But I said to Ms. Fiedler, maybe you don't want to change the planned land use back on this one, even if you are changing the zoning, because you do want them to ultimately look at the reformed zoning districts and see if they might want to take advantage of it. So that was really our discussion. Ms. Fiedler wants to add some clarifying language into the region plan because you can amend the region plan language, but nobody has been very interested in that. They like the mapping better. So we would be bringing forth, Ms. Fiedler would be bringing forth another amendment for the region plan narrative on page 44 at the July 1 meeting. So we are not opposed to this.
So this is interesting in that I am keenly aware that mixed-use zoning designations in Anoronal County Code need to be modernized. So I understand why we have this amendment before us. I hope that, since it's been noted since 2009, that this is, you know, appropriate or even good for a mixed-use zoning, but we haven't, from a land use perspective, from a small-area plan from 2009, as someone who's sensitive that none of the small-area plan in Glen Burnie have been recognized since 2009, it's interesting. I would hate for this area to miss the boat on an opportunity for mixed-use, especially as we look at, you know, a modern economy and the way retail and everything is working these days. But I'll just trust that, you know, I've got this under control for now. And I look forward to that, Bill. If you've got something drafted, I'd love to see it. Anytime. You know where to find me. Any other comments on amendment number 19 to Bill 2824? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 19 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
Nay.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one in the negative. Amendment number 19 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 18 to Bill 2724.
Amendment number 18. This amendment changes the planned land use for the properties known as parcel 17 on Tax Map 18, lots 228 through 273, and 356 through 374, located on Kurtz Ave, Pasadena, from rural to commercial.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Amendment does exactly what it says. As Mr. Kurtz testified, this is the parking lot for Kurtz's beach, and it's been used since 1933. With that, move the amendment.
Second.
The administration have comments?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. We don't have any objection to this change of zoning to C3. It will align the use of the property with the zoning.
Is there any further discussion?
I have a question.
Ms. Hammer.
Mr. Volkey, how has this gone through all this comprehensive zoning and never been changed?
So they've never had a problem until we passed that special events bill. But when we passed that special events bill, now they've started to have problems with parking down there. And because this property is not in a conforming use in the way that they're using it, they've started to have problems.
Got it. Okay. Because, yes, it makes total sense. It just seems logical. It's what it's been used for.
They're never going to be able to develop it in anything. There's no, there's no public sewer, there's no public water down there. This is, you know, in a peninsula, it's like way out.
And it's a parking lot.
It's a parking lot, yep. Actually, it used to be a horse farm when I was a kid. Mr. Kurtz knows that, because I used to see the horse that was out there all the time, bundles, just a little sidebar. Okay.
Okay. Got, got to get to midnight. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number 18. Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian.
I just want to give a shout-out to Mr. Volkey for a really straightforward amendment, and to shout-out to Mr. Kurtz because I love Kurtz Beach. It's a cool place. I've been there, grateful I've been there a couple times. Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hammer.
Aye.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment number 18 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read amendment number 20 to Bill 2824.
Amendment number 20. This amendment changes the zoning on the properties known as parcel 17 on Tax Map 18, lots 228 through 273, and 356 through 374, located on Kurtz Ave. lots 228 through 273 and 356 through 374 located on Kurtz Ave Pasadena from RLD residential low-density to C3 general commercial.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you. Companion to the prior amendment, move the amendment.
Second.
Administration.
Ditto.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 20 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 20 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 19 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 19. This amendment changes the planned land use for a portion of the property known as 3401 Mountain Road Pasadena from residential low-density to commercial, and extends the Village Center overlay over the same portion of the property.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just when you were worried I didn't have any Village Center in my district, here you go. This is an expansion.
Oh, so exciting.
Basically, this property is currently zoned residential. It's been recommended for this property to go into a commercial zoning, because it is on a corner where on two of the four corners presently, there is commercial already and developed commercial, I would say. One corner has a gas station and then a supermarket, the other has a Wendy's, and then behind it is an office complex. Abutting this directly is a, if you look on, you probably need to look on Amendment 19 to 2724, if you see the map there, which is Exhibit S-1, you'll see that at the top portion where Route 177 is, excuse me, Mountain Road, there is a parcel that already is a shopping center that directly abuts this. What this amendment will do is expand the portion of the property that's currently recommended by SAC, PAB, OPZ, everybody, to include a little bit more of the property for potential commercial development. As some of my colleagues have already noted, if any development were to happen, obviously there's site review that has to occur, there are buffers, there's a stream on this property, so there are a number of things, there's probably going to be modifications that are required, so just in case anyone in the community is concerned that automatically they're going to see all of this happen overnight, that would be incorrect, there's quite a bit that needs to happen here. But one of the reasons for extending this line down is, if you look on that Exhibit S-1, you will see that where the line is, it is higher than the intersection with Deering Road, so by moving this down, it allows the opportunity for a signalized intersection there at the Edwin Rayner Boulevard and Deering Road intersection, which will help to improve traffic flow in that corridor, which is already a failing corridor, so as a result, this possible development could bring some improvements to this area to allow for basically some better roads there. So with that, I would move this amendment.
Second.
The administration have comments about Amendment Number 19?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Mr. Volkey gave quite a full description of some of the history on this. I mean, with a property like this, you have to make a decision about where you're going to draw the line. There was certainly a lot of discussion with the SAC and what's the right decision. I do understand the idea of bringing the commercial down below Deering so that that can more easily become a four-way intersection. So with the change in the line between the R2 and the C4 zoning, OPZ does not offer any opposition.
Is there any additional comment from my colleagues about Amendment Number 19 to Bill 2724? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 19.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
I love a good Village Center. Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 19 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 21. This amendment changes the zoning on a portion of the property known as 3401 Mountain Road Pasadena from R2 residential to C4 highway commercial.
Mr. Volkey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Companion to the prior amendment, move the amendment.
Second.
Ditto.
Ditto, yeah.
Any further comments? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 20 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 20. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 1212 Ritchie Highway Arnold from residential low-density to commercial.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You heard from the owner of this property earlier this evening. It is the location of the Arnold Pet Station located across Route 2 from the Big Vanilla, and I will be giving further explanation after motion to adopt.
Second.
Madam Chair, may I continue?
Sure.
So this property has operated under a special exception use for many, many years. It is not a very deep property compared to the residential properties that are surrounding it or on the backside with the access from BNA Boulevard. There is a very large highway, six-lane, four-way intersection, infrastructure smack in the middle of the front yard, or in the corner of the front yard. They are just asking to have their zoning match the use that has been on the property for many, many years, so that's, I came forward with the amendment.
Would the administration like to weigh in on this amendment?
Yes. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. I'm just thinking if I'm going to read all of this or not.
Madam Secretary, I don't know if this may help Ms. Pampa cut down on what she reads, but some of Planning and Zoning's original, I don't know what their current position is here tonight, but opposition to the requested C3, C4 for this property was that their special exception use is not permitted in the commercial categories, which led us down a conversation on animal hospitals and veterinary clinics and hospitals and the inconsistency in our zoning code. So I will be introducing a bill after the recess to clear that up, and then they would be able to operate, assuming that legislation would pass, as they are today with that zoning.
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So just to jump off of what Ms. Fiedler is saying, the site does have a special exception, which it has had since 1991, over 30 years. The discussion with the Stakeholder Advisory Committee was that they were okay with the veterinary hospital, but they didn't want to see the site opened up to all the uses that are permitted in the C4 zoning district. We tended to agree with them and continue to recommend R1. I think obviously Ms. Fiedler is proposing C2, which again is a compromise, and so we don't offer any opposition to that.
Is there any discussion with my colleagues regarding Amendment Number 20? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 20 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 20 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 22. This amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 1212 Ritchie Highway Arnold from R1 residential to C2 commercial office.
Ms. Fiedler. I'm a little stuck on the fact that 1991 was 30 years ago, but this is, this is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
I assume your comments.
Yes, I'm sorry, ditto.
No further discussion. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 22 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 23 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 23. This amendment changes the zoning on the property known as 8348 Ritchie Highway Pasadena from C1 local commercial to C4 highway commercial.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This property is already zone commercial. It's a relatively small property when you combine even just the individual parcels that you see in your map, but more importantly, it is directly adjacent to what will be the fire maintenance facility, which if you all recall from our budget hearings and the follow-up documents shared by Department of Public Works, that's going to encompass a significant part of the adjacent lot, and with that, motion to adopt.
The administration like to comment on Amendment Number 23?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. This is a brand-new application filed with the county council, so we have no history on it that we can tell you about. The planned land use is already commercial, the zoning is already commercial, and yes, the proposed county fire maintenance facility to the north of this property will create compatibility with this proposed C4, and so we don't offer any objection.
Just getting oriented on my map. Is there any discussion on Amendment Number 23? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 23 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Even though it's in Ms. Fiedler's district, it is a Pasadena area, so aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 23 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2724.
Amendment Number 21. This amendment changes the planned land use for the property known as 44 Early Heights Road Severna Park from residential low-density to commercial.
Ms. Fiedler, this is your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had folks come out, testify in support of this amendment. This corrects, I would think, corrects the property across the street from the actual Listman's store that is part of the Listman's property. I drove by there a few weekends ago. It is so wonderful to see folks out there again and sitting around drinking coffees and just, it's wonderful to see, and with that, motion to adopt.
The administration like to weigh in on Amendment Number 21?
Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. This is also another one with a short history, because the application has only come in during the county council, so it didn't go through the OPZ process. We don't offer any objection, because this change of zoning to C1 will align the use of the property with the zoning, similar to the last one.
Any discussion on Amendment Number 21? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2724.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 21 to Bill 2724 has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2824.
Amendment Number 24. This amendment changes the zoning of the property known as 44 Early Heights Road Severna Park from R2 residential to C1 local commercial.
Ms. Fiedler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the companion amendment to the previously passed amendment. Motion to adopt.
Second.
Administration. Fantastic. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2824.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
And Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number 24 to Bill 2824 has been adopted.
Okay. Madam Secretary, both Bill Number 2724 as amended and Bill 2824 as amended will be heard again on July 1, 2024. Do we have a resolution? Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 27-24.
Resolution Number 2424. Resolution approving appointment and reappointment of members to the Police Accountability Board.
This is an administration resolution. You have the floor, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration. So Resolution 2424 makes four appointments to the Police Accountability Board. It's three new appointments and, or three new appointments and one reappointment of a member who is already on the board and has been doing a fabulous job, so I can run through them very quickly. I believe you have all of their resumes already. We are reappointing Cedric Johnson from District 4, who is currently the Deputy Chief of Operations at BW Baltimore Washington International Thurgood Marshall Airport. We are also appointing Jennifer Munt, who's a resident of District 2. She's an education and operations professional, is currently the Director of Education and Professional Development for the Association of Unity Programs, University Programs in Health Administration. She was previously involved in the Goucher Prison Education Partnership, which is a great program, if you're not familiar with it. David Weir is a resident of District 2. He is a retired police officer from Prince George's County. He spent 22 years as a patrol officer and detective. And then Tolasar Lisa Ellis from County Council District 1, is an executive with the Department of Defense at Fort Meade. Happy to answer any questions.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 27-24. We had no one sign up to speak ahead of time. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to come forward to speak on Resolution Number 27-24? Seeing no movement in the audience, the public hearing on Resolution 27-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary.
Madam Chair, it's Resolution 2424.
Not according to my script, it isn't.
You know, it's been a long day, I apologize.
Okay. What resolution are we voting on?
2424.
2424, everybody.
And there was no written testimony on the online testimony tool.
Sorry.
It's okay. I make a lot of mistakes, but this one wasn't mine. The public hearing on Resolution 24-24 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2424. Resolution Number 2424. Resolution approving appointment and reappointment of members to the Police Accountability Board.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution 24-24.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.